Hey Dawn, can you hear us online in the room? Hey Dawn, I'm trying to check if you guys online can hear us in the meeting room. If you can, can you um just let-
I can hear you. I can hear you right now. Yep.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
Here's one. Great. Hello quorum. Yeah, are we ready to roll? Looking around is we're waiting for anybody or we're good?
Trustee Corvalan online? Okay.
Trustee Corvalan's not online yet. I mean you could, it's up to you Mayor Protemhold if you want to start and see if she jumps on or if you want to wait.
I think we should get started. Um I'm uh we're, we hit 901 at one point. I'd love to break our record. Okay, it's uh 704. I call the Netherland uh Town and Netherland Board of Trustees to order. It's 704. Can we start with a roll call please Macy?
Trustee Blakemore, here. Trustee Kums Ismail.
Here.
Mayor Protemhold.
Here.
Again.
And I'd like to note for the record that Trustee Corvalan is not currently present but is expected to be attending, attending the meeting this evening virtually.
Okay, we'll start with item three consent agenda. Um there were quite a few things in here, um including warrants, minutes, um the intergovernmental agreement. Uh does anybody have any questions that we need to get into before we move to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Anything from you current? Okay, now let's go to a vote.
Um Mayor Protemhold?
Yes.
Trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
And Trustee Kums Ismail?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalan is now on.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much Trustee Corvalan.
And it looks like the motion carries uh it's, we move on to item four public and uh comment on non-agenda items. Um is Natasha online tonight? She submitted something in the packet?
No, she's not online.
Okay.
Unless she's a call-in user, but I don't believe she's online.
Okay. Good. Uh is Deborah on tonight?
No, she's not.
Okay. Does the board have any uh questions about what was in uh section four, the public comment? Do we want to go, do we have people for online for either online or in the room for for public comment tonight?
No one's raised their hand online, so if there's anyone in the room.
Okay. Alrighty.
Well, this is Trustee Corvalan. Um I do just want to comment about the road letter and um that I think it's really important right now that especially since we're asking for money from our constituents for increasing in tax for sales property and marijuana tax increase to go in general fund, public works, police department. I think it's really important right now that we get our roads in good shape, everything as best as we can, um just because otherwise it just doesn't look like we're spending our money properly.
So I did coordinate with Trustee Corvalan on this today and so I've, so Emmett Pelletier, Street Supervisor is currently out of town, but I did speak with his employees and their intention is to do some work this week and then I will coordinate with Emmett next week when he returns to map out a plan of how we'll hit all those areas that are definitely in need of some grading and other road work.
Well, it's it's like in my area, and I can't speak for other parts, it's culverts are clogged, drainages are not draining and you know, it's a maintenance thing and I'm not, I know everybody's understaffed, overworked, underpaid, et cetera, but I'm just saying we're asking for money, we better show people our best face before election day.
Right, and Emmett did leave his team a list and and quite a few culverts are listed on that and so today they had to do some sewer work, but when I spoke with them this afternoon that was their intention and they did start to tackle some culverts. I believe they were in Old Town and then they'll continue to work their way and so I'll keep working with them um while Emmett's gone and then we'll definitely connect with Emmett upon his return.
We're doing that all ourselves, we're not subcontracting.
Correct, we do that ourselves.
And sidewalks, we do it all ourselves.
Yes, and Nikki handles sidewalks and her team and her team, they put it, Nikki, go ahead.
My team actually, it's in the packet, it's in my um public works parks uh my my update um that we've been inundated with rain lately and our main priority has really been trying to get this GOCO grant down at Gercio done. But the next two weeks are really lined out, that's all we're going to be doing is sidewalks and trails and tomorrow we'll be grading the Chpita parking lot in that area, trying to get that all ready for the big event that we have this weekend there. Um today, the East Street sidewalks were all hit in Second Street, so it's, you know, we'll catch up, it's just hard when it's raining, raining like this to keep on top of it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For the the playground uh up, that is really uh super cool, or the musical playground. We had fun with it.
Miranda, is Emmett looking at, will the road crew look at ditches?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and just out of curiosity, you two, how long will sidewalk repair last? How long does a big spring street repair last generally?
Sidewalk repair lasts, I mean, we do it a little bit here and there all summer long, that's a daily thing. Um but we can, like today, we got all of East Street and all of Second Street done in one day with just using one person today. So it does go pretty fast once we get on it, as long as we have the materials in a place where they're accessible for the little tiny tractor that we're utilizing for that. And then like the Eldora sweeping, that's a a few hours. You know, it doesn't doesn't take a whole lot, a long time to sweep a sidewalk or anything like that, so sidewalks and trails move rather quickly.
Good.
In the past, um roads actually in the past take, you know, we can do peak view and valley view in a day. That kind of thing, uh if it's all in one kind of area. It really again depends on how wet it is and how much maintenance needs to be done in that area. If it's just the grading, that might go pretty quick, but if we gotta pull all the ditches and do all of that on top of it, then it might take a little bit more time. If we've got to haul a lot of material up there, then we're talking a little bit more time. Okay. Excuse me.
Cool, that's uh that's wonderful and I uh I haven't looked ahead to the forecast, I've got my ticket for next Saturday, but I I hope the weather holds up. Sounds like she's got about 450 tickets sold. Good, excellent. Um any other um any of the items under section four, public comment? Ah, thank you, you're up.
Well, I'd like to get public comment. Kathleen Chibai, uh thirty-one year resident, nineteen year business owner. Um I was assaulted in my store uh two Sundays ago by a person in town who has some problems. Um but I got most of the incident recorded between myself and the body cams on law enforcement and uh when I listened to the recording of what occurred, um I want to put on record, this is why I'm giving my public comment, that I was threatened if I had come to another Board of Trustees meeting. Apparently the assault was over my participation in uh Netherland Town Meetings and I was being told that I held the town hostage, I don't know what that means, that I was trying to kill democracy. Um a lot of swear words um were used at me and uh I had a enraged screaming person two inches from my face spitting at me. Uh physically grabbed my video camera, um started to get physical with me and thankfully uh the uh Boulder sheriffs showed up right when it started to get physical. But af- after a few days passed, I realized that someone had sent me a screenshot from uh Nedheads on Facebook where two of the administrators, uh Kristen Conrad, who used to be a trustee here and uh Jeanette Keen Taylor, whose husband was previously mayor, um were inciting uh saying a lot of slanderous things, using my first and last name in violation of their own rules. And basically, what was written in those comments is exactly what the woman who assaulted me three, four days later was saying. So I want to put it on record that I feel like um numerous people should be aware of what they are saying and what they are inciting other, how other people will react to what they're saying. Especially when they don't have any public record to back up anything I'm being accused of um by people who in my opinion are attempting to kill democracy. I've been participating for uh thirteen years now at town meetings, more than any person resident or non-resident uh in Netherland. And I only work off public records, so um I feel like I'm actually participating in democracy and when I'm now being threatened after reading uh uh Gillian Taylor's opinion piece in the newspaper that there was people, a small group of people trying to kill democracy and then he called me a gadfly, referred to me as a gadfly in that opinion. Um and I have a lot of hate being directed at me right now, so I want to put that on record. Um and I feel like if any further uh attacks on my freedom of speech and participation in town meetings occur, I'm I'm going to be forced into legal action. Thank you.
Kathleen, can you hang out for a bit? Um any other, uh I've got a clarifying question, do others, do any of you want to go first?
Only to comment that this is deeply disturbing and unacceptable behavior.
Thank you, I agree.
You know, participation regardless of whether we agree or not is important and we have to be able to disagree in order to have a democracy operate effectively, so.
I concur.
I fully agree, I'm so sorry this is happening Kathleen.
Yeah, thank you Tanya.
My question is, uh what do you suggest? How do we, I mean, obviously this wasn't moderated very well, what can we do, what should we do?
Well, I'm just saying for the future because Chris Larson and Gillian Taylor were the first people to start saying at public meetings that Ron Mitchell was holding the town hostage. I never figured out what that meant either. Um uh I don't know what it means when I'm being told I'm holding people hostage. Uh the kill democracy stuff came up during um the election when I was, had just finished telling Chris Larson that he wasn't allowed to run for a fifth consecutive term. And then all of a sudden Gillian Taylor was running and I disputed how many seats were available on the board uh that should have been on the ballot and those things. So that's when all of this holding hostage language, killing democracy language and and directing it the most direct was calling, referring to me as a gadfly in the opinion piece printed by the newspaper. Because this board just gave that newspaper twenty-five thousand dollar grant. I have written numerous letters to respond and letters to the editor that were, are never printed, never printed. And people are allowed to take potshots at me in the newspaper and I don't find that to be appropriate. So maybe curbing uh the newspaper is supposed to be both sides, first off, and it's supposed to be keeping an eye on town government.
Yep.
Um it hasn't been operating that way for years and it it, she also didn't print anything about the recall. There were numerous people who sent in letters to the editor in again, in support of the recall. She only printed three letters against the recall and they came from board members' wives and uh and close friends.
Okay.
So, so I'm, there's my concern, it's allowed to be printed in the paper, I'm not even allowed to respond in the paper when I'm being directly attacked. So maybe that, you know, I don't know, because none of us can control when people lose it, why they lose it, but I believe that um since at minimum the recall, which was run at the end of twenty nineteen, that um Chris Larson spent two years taking potshots at every public comment he made. I wasn't allowed to respond, he, I would hang up and he'd say she's, everything she said was a lie. And I couldn't respond. So it's this, and I'm hoping that the Gillian and the mayor being, Larson being gone off the board, that I'm not going to take that kind of public abuse anymore, but I'm not going to stand for it anymore. Um two months ago, a large rock that didn't come from First Street was left right in front of the bay window on my business. I reported that I uh to uh one of the deputies as a threat because I walk up on a Sunday morning, I had just been there Saturday night, there was no big rock, it didn't come from First Street and it's in front of my bay window. I took that as a threat and I registered it because I knew things were escalating. This attack in my store by someone who I had no idea was going to behave this way whatsoever or anything. And I'm sitting here going, wow, I can't even, if I punch this woman, I might be the one in trouble. And that's not the way it should go. And I should have been able, and as a matter of fact, when, after it was all said and done, law enforcement told me I could have, I could have had a physical response because, because I was-
It was deep inside your store.
Well, I, well, right, and I was pinned against the wall and sitting downward, so.
Somehow that's staying on.
But anyways, that's-
You're still, you're still alive.
I'm alive, but you know, but it, I'm 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 nervous because none of us can control what some people are thinking and none of us can control any of their actions until it's too late.
Agreed. Thanks, uh thanks very much and uh I like your expansion. Your, the new, the back part of your store. That's really- Yep. Um anybody else before we, uh thank you for that.
I mean, it is just a good reminder that, you know, we are in positions where the things that we say are taken quite seriously by the people who hear them and it might not be the same on the other side. Right? When folks come up for public comment, what they say might not be taken as seriously as what we say, so just to, just that we remain conscious of that. Um obviously, we can, we can say things if we, if we feel we need to, uh because we do have that freedom as well, but we should be conscious of it.
I'm not catching your point.
Be careful.
Could you just be stating?
Just, just that we we have been maybe loose with our language at times on this board since I've been on it and just a recommendation that we are more considerate with with how we choose to deliver the information or the opinions that we're trying to deliver.
I'd like to add, if you're, have evidence if you're going to deliver something. That's the thing I have about me and Ron being told we've held the town hostage. I don't even know what that means, but what evidence do we have of that? Okay, you shouldn't be sitting on the board spewing nonsense and I'm hoping that the two people that were doing that are now not going to be a problem.
Yeah, in the hundred and twenty-five days I've been doing this, my biggest lesson is double check what your facts at and make sure it's right because it's more nuanced generally than what gets spewed. Thanks. Um I guess, let's see, so that wraps up uh section four, we go to informational items. Miranda, you want to set the table for five dot one?
I'm I'm sorry, did we approve the consent agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We did, yeah.
Okay, uh so on the, this informational item is regarding Trustee Baumhofer's resignation. On August seventh, twenty twenty-two, Trustee Baumhofer submitted his resignation letter to the Board of Trustees. Per Colorado revised statute thirty-one, four, three oh three, the BOT has the power to fill the vacancy by appointment or by ordering a special election. The person appointed or elected will hold the office until the next regular election, which will be April twenty twenty-four. And the BOT needs to decide how you want to fill the vacancy, whether it's appointment or election within sixty days of when the vacancy occurred, which would be October seventh, or seventh. Uh Mayor Protemhold did recommend considering waiting until after the special election, which is next Tuesday, um to decide how to fill that vacancy, but really the question before you tonight is, do you have any questions? Again, this is not an action or necessarily a discussion, just an informational at this time.
Board?
Well, well, um if, I I guess if, if any of us want to um do some, make a decision before um the new board is seated, then you know, we want to discuss that, but I'm, I'm okay with um Mayor Protemhold's recommendation of waiting until after August twenty-third special election to decide how to fill the vacancy when we have the other board members.
If there was a desire to to make that, you would move it to an action item and make that decision tonight? Um if that was a desire of the board.
Tanya, what do you say?
Well, you guys, you guys know what I think. I think we should give it to the second place person um in this current election that we're having, assuming that, I mean, we could set a parameter about it being reasonably close, uh you know, within twenty percent. I I don't know, I just feel like now we're going to be wasting more time. I mean, if we appoint, it's not without, it's not without time and energy, we're going to have to put it out there, people are going to have to come. And we have three applicants right now and that's just what I think and I understand that, you know, you don't want to set a precedence for behavior, but I think this is an entirely different situation that we dealt with in April where we had a, a mayor that may or may not accept the position. Here we have a vacancy right now, today and it's like, we're going to have this election and we're still going to have one vacancy and we may have two if if Tom wins the uh mayor and, and we're just back in the same situation and I just, it just bums me out. And I, I know, I understand your position about waiting and assigning and but I think the appointment's not going to come without a lot of time and effort on our part and I just think we need to start moving forward with action items with this town and stop fixing these potholes that have been created since this mayor uh problems we had. That's what I think.
Um just to clarify, town staff, Miranda, um what Trustee Corvalan is describing is technically an appointment anyway.
Correct.
It is not an election.
Correct.
It's an appointment, right? So, and we couldn't do that until after the election anyway.
Correct.
So it doesn't functionally make much of a difference to make that decision now because the new board will be seated anyway.
Seven days.
And they will decide, they will be able to undo any decision that we make now. Like we can't hold them to an appointment.
Right, well, because you wouldn't know who you're appointing, right? In essence, you would be expressing a desire to put the person who received the second highest votes in, but you can't make that as a formal action.
Right.
But on August thirtieth, when the new officers take their oath, you could have it on the agenda to do an appointment that night.
But tha- that would change the makeup of the board, so fundamentally, that could be voted down anyway.
Correct.
So it seems more prudent to me to simply wait because functionally it's the same.
Yeah, the one thing I I absolutely want to correct and I then think about this last couple of days is we could deadlock on anything with four people.
Indeed.
And I'm really looking forward to having the fifth.
Yeah.
And that'll happen in a week and then we have to decide, do we want uh one more to to make it lopsided or to make it ungovernable again, or do we want to deal with uh we, we need to get back to an odd number. Um and then, you know, I don't know that, we're not here to discuss how many members should be on the board, but anybody who can do nose counts knows it's unsustainable to have even numbers.
Wait, this isn't the way it's going to be, it's always been six plus the mayor that I've been on this.
Total seven votes.
Yeah, so that's what we're gonna be doing at some point, like if you don't win mayor, you're a trustee and then we have one more trustee and we're at six, so we're going to have to appoint somebody else.
It's, it's-
We're going to have to fill Jonathan's spot. Now, if you win, then we still have, then we're going to have to appoint two spots, but I understand that your spot, we can't make any choices on it at all because
Alright.
it's up in the air fitty fitty, you know, but like, yeah.
I don't-
I'm not following what you're saying. I do agree with Eric, though, like you're right, let's just wait, that's going to be my recommendation. Once we have the new board, you're acting like it's like this whole new board, it's one more person, but that's great, I'm excited for it.
Right, it gets just a swing vote.
Yeah, it's perfect.
That's all I'm saying, so we should just wait till we have that vote here, so we know what it is.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, good. Yeah, the sooner, the sooner the better and uh we're a week away, it's going to take care of itself to a degree pretty soon. We'll have some clarity in seven days. Uh anybody else want to talk about this one? Uh Miranda, is there um anything else that's required with his resignation? Okay.
No.
Good. Okay, well, I've enjoyed having a quorum of three, I'm looking forward to being uh Okay, so we close out uh item five dot one, move on to action items. Uh appointment of Judge Thrower is municipal judge, Miranda, set the table.
So Judge David Thrower has been our municipal judge since August two thousand eighteen and he's seeking his second reappointment. Um so Judge Thrower is here to, to talk to you, some of you have met him before, I'm in a virtual setting and so he will introduce himself. Tonight, you have a resolution reappointing him. Mayor Protemhold, he will need to do an oath of office, which you'll do with him. Uh we do have a contract in the agreement or in the packet and so just a clarification, his appointment is for another two years. Um and we're simply doing a re- a reappointment using the old contract terms from two thousand eighteen, having those ratified. We did identify that his old firm is listed on that contract, so we do need to amend it and so my recommendation is that we bring it back to you under consent at the eight-thirty, just so you're looking at um the contract, but the important things are the resolution and the oath of office today.
Good, what changes in in the contract that's being-
There were no changes in the contract aside from uh correcting, he's no, no longer with that firm uh and Judge Thrower, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you, Uh, and Judge Thrower, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you, you have your own, you're, you're independent as a municipal judge. And, um, we changed contact information. But Judge Thrower, oh, yes.
Yeah, I, um, I have a question about the contract. Section four term. Um, it's, it's a little confusing. I think the way I read this is that the term should be, um, coincide with, um, the, uh, every two-year election. Um, the last sentence there says, if the board reappoints consultant to the office of municipal judge after the next regular municipal election, and that's for the first appointment. This agreement shall automatically be renewed for an additional two-year term under the same terms and conditions as the initial term. So I'm wondering if we want to get this in sync with the, um, it seems like it should be from my reading of that paragraph.
Yeah, I'd love to have Judge Thrower answer that. I mean, obviously we've done this. We've done his reappointments in August, just because that's when he started with us. But Judge Thrower, your thoughts on aligning this and having you take your next oath then in April 2024?
Sure. So first of all, can you all hear me?
Well, we do.
Okay. I've had some, apparently some audio connection problems. So I was speaking to you both on my computer and my telephone, and hopefully that will not cause any issues. Uh, I have no, I have no objection whatsoever to, um, coinciding my term with your elections. Uh, pursuant to state statute, it's my understanding that I have to be reappointed after elections anyway, even if my term is different. The way that's usually done is after an election, the new board appoints all sitting officials that are retained or have contracts or whatever. But it is easier in my view to make it coincide with your election. And I would have no objection to doing that. Uh, really whatsoever. I think you'd make it easier on all of us. And I, I agree. I, I, I saw the old contract and, uh, gave, gave Miranda my thoughts, which were really that what we were, what I understood we were doing tonight is sort of ratifying what we've done before. But if we want to change that to coincide with your elections, I'm more than willing to do that. Absolutely.
Um, so we would, would, uh, um, appoint today and then at the next, um, April election, try and get it to coincide. And I, I, I'm thinking nothing needs to change in that paragraph, but, um, attorney Mattson may have, have some thoughts on it.
Sure. So that's what we'll bring this back to under consent on August 30th. That way I can work with Judge Thrower to make a couple of those changes that we identified today that need to be added in or amended in the contract.
Judge Thrower, a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Doing this for a while, um, in the cases that come before you, have you seen any, anything changed significantly over the past year in the cases you need to adjudicate?
Not necessarily in the manner of the cases that I see. Um, certainly the, the ebb and flow of the number of cases we see that come to court. Uh, there's been no predicting it really since the beginning of the pandemic and, um, it has been interesting. And I, I suppose what I would tell you is I, I feel very fortunate in the Netherlands to have the team that, that work in municipal court. We have a very fair prosecutor. The court administrator has done a wonderful job in making court efficient. And digitizing court for us in a way that makes it easier to retain required records. I'll tell you that I'm pretty proud of some juvenile cases that we've seen where the juveniles have, they might not have always come back exactly on the day, date of review, but when they have come back, they have done really amazing things. So that's kind of a long-winded answer to say that, um, the last few years in all six of my jurisdictions have been interesting to say the least. Uh, I would say that, um, you know, I'd say in Netherlands, it splits maybe, maybe 50, 50 between traffic and other, other ordinance violations. Uh, but that, I haven't really noted that that has changed too much over the four years I've been there. It's been kind of consistent in that, in that regard.
Terrific. Are, are we substantially different from the other five courts you reside over?
Only, well, I like to say that one of the beauties of municipal court is it's a community court, right? So it's a court that reflects the needs and sort of the goals of the community. So to answer your question, uh, yes, it's different. Every court I serve is different. Um, and one of the things I truly enjoy is getting to know a court and the communities around it. And, and try to base my, my philosophy of those courts around that community. I will say that the, the effects of the pandemic and sort of some of the other unrest over the past few years, I've felt that in each of my six jurisdictions to one degree or another, there's been a consistency there. Um, I, I just think it's sort of the, the state of things right now. It's, it's just different from when I started nine years ago, eight years ago.
Great. Okay. Um, this is an open meeting. Is there anything, uh, that you want to cover tonight that we haven't talked about yet?
No, I, I, I did want to be sure and mention thanks to, uh, the prosecutor and to the court administrator for their good work and uh, the continued support from the town. Uh, I, we meet in the community center where you are now, and I can't say enough good things about them accommodating us, make sure that the, uh, the temperature's okay. And, um, I've always felt very welcome in Netherlands. And, uh, as somebody who's been coming to Netherlands since he was very small, uh, that was a really good thing to feel, uh, throughout my appointment. So I sure appreciate the opportunity. I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have. Um, and I, you know, as things ebb and flow, I would encourage each of you to attend a, a municipal court session. If you're interested to see what happens there, because it, they generally are pretty interesting one way or the other.
So this is your chair on some days.
Uh, I can, I see you as a basically a very small postage stamp on my screen, but yes, that is my chair on the, I guess it's the second Friday of every month.
I'll come up to watch.
I'd appreciate that. I'd enjoy seeing you.
Thanks. Board, uh, anything to ask, add, clarify?
Thank you, Judge Thrower.
Much appreciated, Judge Thrower. Thank you.
My absolute pleasure.
Um, I guess, okay, at this point, uh, because this, this is an action item, what's our next step, Miranda?
I would recommend you, um, adopt the resolution and then complete the oath of office.
Public comment.
And public comment. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. We have, uh, do we have public comment at this point?
I, not anyone online. That's.
Anybody in the room? Uh, oh, you're just, you're just sowing. You're not, uh, commenting. Okay, good. Then, um, I think we're, uh, public cam, comment is clear. Do we, do we have a motion?
I'd move to approve resolution 2022 dash 36, appointing David Thrower as town judge.
Second?
I'll second.
And can we go to a vote?
Mayor Protem Mahold?
Yes.
Trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
Trustee Koomz Ismael?
Yes.
And trustee Corverland?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. That's a pretty short action item list tonight.
Oath of office.
Uh, yep, completely. You want to do the oath of office with Judge Thrower. Macy has a copy, I think, if needed.
I think I better get it.
I have a copy in front of me as well. If you'd like, I can just read it. It's up to you all.
Uh, hold on one sec. Okay. I've got it here and I'll be, um, you'll be signing it and Macy will be signing it. Um, but yeah, it, because this is you, uh, making an affirmation. Go ahead.
I, David Thrower, do solemnly affirm that I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the State of Colorado, and the ordinances of the Town of Netherlands, and that I will faithfully and to the best of my skill and ability perform the duties of the Office of Municipal Court Judge of the Town of Netherlands upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Judge, and thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you all very much. Take care.
Okay. Good. Um, so we can close out, um, action item six, or the, the one action item we have under six, right, Miranda?
Yes.
Okay. And Judge, we'll have you sign this next time you're up the hill.
Well, Macy can send. I think the intention was Judge Thrower, Macy will send you the oath for signature and then you can send it back to us.
Very good.
I have it. I'm happy to sign it and just scan it and get it back to you if that's okay with you.
That sounds great. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
Outstanding. That'll be inbound tonight.
Cool.
Much appreciated. Thanks for your flexibility on the date.
Take care.
Okay. Uh, we moved to item seven, discussion items, uh, and we are going to have a Q and A with the Boulder County Sheriff's Office. Miranda, do you want to say what, any, any, whatever needs to be said about that?
Uh, sure. So originally on the agenda was a Q and A with Boulder County Sheriff's Office. Um, we are not moving forward with that tonight. Um, there are still some pieces that as town administration, the Board of Trustees that we're working through regarding the police department. Um, what I can say is currently we do have Boulder County, uh, extra duty officers who are supporting, uh, Marshall Fine Lovin', uh, typically doing so, um, on the weekends, but we are asking for, for intermittent shifts in between. And so they are being a great partner with us and providing that coverage, uh, so that Marshall Fine Lovin' can have intermittent breaks. Um, so looking forward to continuing that conversation, um, but wanted to make sure that we kind of tied up a few things on our end before we engage in an official Q and A.
Terrific. Uh, board, anything on this item before we move on to seven dot two? Tanya? We're good?
Oh, yeah, no, we're good. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so that closes out seven dot one. Let's go to seven dot two, the supplemental budget. Uh, Miranda, please read this one in.
Macy, will you make me full? I think you just need to take Judge Thrower off of being on the, on the stage. Um, all right. So before you tonight, we are bringing supplemental number, budget number two. So as you recall, we did do a supplemental budget number one, just to straighten out how the Health and Human Services Fund worked. Um, so this is now officially number two. We created just a brief PowerPoint presentation that highlights it. But we have representatives of town staff to answer questions. Uh, while we do not have everyone, we are equipped to answer any questions you have. So the objectives tonight is to really talk about the Netherlands Police Department supplemental budget. That's really how we got started. But we also have department requests and we want to talk about staff salaries, which is something I have mentioned before. Just some background information. What we are proposing tonight is for the current 2022 budget only. This is not, you know, this will obviously guide us as we go into 2023, but it doesn't have anything to do with that budget at this time. Increases are to cover for some things, expenses that have already occurred or will occur in this year. And if approved, of course, these figures will play into how we budget 2023. Um, but we have not started the 2023 budget process, so we're not prepared to answer questions specifically to how all this affects next year. We're not ready to answer those because we have not started those figures. So just wanted to set that out. I'm trying to move. Okay. Netherlands Police Department, unfortunately Marshall Fine Lovin' had to leave, so I'll just do a quick, uh, recap here. So Boulder County Sheriff's Office, they're providing extra duty coverage. So we already have a contract with them for overnight coverage. This is above and beyond that. These are the additional shifts that they're picking up. Um, our contract current, the current line item in the budget is just for that contract and those overnight services. We are recommending increasing the budget by 58,760 to cover extra duty. We feel that that covers what has happened and what likely will happen in the future. We are recommending increasing background checks to 6,200. Um, currently we have exhausted or close to exhausted that line item. Um, I do have an error in here. So just the background check is $400. When you add in poly and psych and, and those other, and physical, you're probably looking at Marshall Fine Lovin', I believe you said, 960 or just shy of a thousand between all of those. And so we still feel that this increase is appropriate, given that we have some, I believe we have some in our budget and then we can add this in. We do feel, we do agree with this number. It's just that that's not $400 per applicant. That's background check alone. Salaries, we're looking to increase the salaries by 103,374. So this is a breakdown that Marshall Fine Lovin' have provided, where the town marshal moves to 109 to 119. Sergeant's 85,000 to 95,000, and officer 65 to 80, and the court clerk is 55 to 65. I want to point out that in this PowerPoint, I'm only talking salaries. If you're interested in the employers' taxes and the retirement, you'll want to look at that detailed budget document. Marshall Fine Lovin', is there anything else to add to this slide before we move on? Let me do a quick, I do a quick mute. Keep going. All right. So we have the visitor center and community center and administration. So the visitor center received a donation this year for 2,750 and it's for a new sign. However, because we don't have it budgeted, we can't use it for that. So what we're doing is we're adding in the revenue and the expense in order to have the new sign. Um, supplies for resale. The visitor center is doing an incredible job acquiring supplies for resale and selling them. Our revenue is higher than it's been. I mean, they're just doing, we're, we're so thankful for all the work they've been doing and we want to be able to give them funds to buy more things, to sell more things. Uh, what's cool is Teresa Crush Warren has done a, a big change in that where she's really selling local items, more so than kind of your large bulk purchase items and changing, I think, the, the vendors that we have there and bringing in new. So we'd like to be able to give her $25,000 to continue to purchase those items.
It's working capital, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, community center. And Dawn, I'll let you chime in after I give this brief overview, but this building needs some improvements. We're just bringing you the urgent ones. The urgent ones being ADA automatic door features at the front door. There was a recent incident where we struggled to assist a woman who utilized a wheelchair and she struggled to get into the building. And so it was really important to us that we recognize this need, uh, spoke with Nikki as our ADA compliance personnel and felt like this had to happen now. And then we need a grease trap. The failure to replace the grease trap is going to create issues for the utilities department. There's a lot of different vendors who move in and out of here, and it's important to deal with the grease trap. We're looking at about $20,000 for the doors and $10,000 for the grease trap. But Dawn, I'll turn it over to you if you want to add into that anymore.
Yeah. So, um, I'm hoping that both of those numbers are high. Um, but as you know, it, should you approve the supplemental budget, um, any leftover funds would go back into the fund balance. So they wouldn't, they're designated specifically for those projects. I have been chasing down vendors. It's just a cat and mouse game. It's, it's hurting cats. It's trying all the time to get the people to come to set the appointments, to get the estimates, to get the bids. So I wish I had hard numbers for you tonight, but I don't. Um, but I keep trying. So those are our current challenges and I, these are our urgent things. As Nikki explained to me and with the ADA, once you identify a deficiency in ADA, you are obligated to fix it. And, um, actually the woman was exiting the building and she was very self-sufficient and I happened to be right there to hold the door, but I had a just giant pit in my stomach. It was not okay. It needs to be made right. And the grease trap, um, we're just, we're doing the best we can. We're getting it cleaned out. And, but it needs to be replaced now. I know the new, um, regs are coming on that in 2023, but we can't wait. We have too much going on in that kitchen. So we will, it, it has been specked and will be replaced to the new specs. That's all.
Thanks, Dawn. And that regulation Dawn is talking about is, uh, the Board of Trustees invested funds in a pre-treatment policy that is specific to a lot of things, but grease is obviously a part of that. And so it's important that we ensure compliance, but we will be asking for that to be codified for 2023. And to Dawn's point, we don't feel like this is something we can wait on because as the grease creates larger problems for utilities. So we don't want to be pushing this down to then the other department to have to deal with. Thanks, Dawn. Uh, administration, we'd like to increase legal by 16,250. This covers current legal expenses and future. We are seeing it at quite an increase in, uh, the amount of time attorney Mattson is having to spend on a variety of different things and feel that this will cover us through the remainder of the year. Uh, Nikki, I'll just do a brief introduction. I'll turn it over to you, uh, for parks. We have brought this to you before that, you know, we want to do a sidewalk repair and Nikki was able to connect with a vendor who could do so this year for 3,500. And Nikki would love for you to speak to that more.
So the city of Boulder actually was called out in a lawsuit and the, the person that sued the city of Boulder won because the city of Boulder knew about some problems in their sidewalk. So we were told at the beginning of this season that if we knew about problems with our sidewalks and didn't do anything about fixing them, then we would actually be held accountable. I was given until the middle of June to come up. then we would actually be held accountable. I was given until the middle of June to come up with some solutions. And what we did was we marked the problems with spray paint. And, um, and made them obvious so that, uh, because that was the important, but that was one of the important first steps. Then I've contracted or hopefully I will contract with this vendor. They've put the, a spot in their schedule for the end of August, September to come up here. Macy? Um, they've put a spot in their schedule for that, uh, mid, end of August, beginning of September. They would come up here and repair all of the sidewalks around the first street area, down the Ace Bank line and all the way up to Eldora, um, putting us into ADA compliance. Cause right now we're not, especially on the Eldora line, um, between the C dot runoff and the C dot overlays that they've done to us in the past, which are nice, but they were actually supposed to come back and fix our entries and exits to the sidewalk and they, and they didn't. So what we need is this company to come in and they're, they'll basically grind down, um, those areas where we have more than a half an inch of uh, step up or a step down. Um, I think it's a fabulous deal. I had no idea. In fact, I was like pretty panicked, thinking that this was going to be a huge expenditure and gonna take years of time. And this company came up and said, oh, no, no, this is what we do. We can do this whole area, thirty five hundred dollars. I think it's a fabulous deal. So I'm hopeful, not just for the look of it, but also because I really don't want the town to get sued. I think thirty five hundred is a drop in the bucket compared to what a lawsuit would cost us. So.
It's the right thing to do.
It is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thanks, Nikki. So, uh, streets, uh, Emmett Pelletier, street supervisor is asking for $30,000 to repave the visitor center parking lot. Uh, if you've been over there, it's pretty rough. Needs, uh, so likely more so than just a pothole repair. He'd like to do a full repave. He also would like to do dust suppressant stabilizer. Um, we actually didn't budget for this. As a reminder, he did take a $7,000 and do a test in Big Springs and we feel like it went really well. So he'd like to take $20,000, which is two more miles, uh, giving him a little bit of a buffer to continue to do other areas of Big Springs. Um, so asking for that dust mitigation.
Can I ask a couple of questions right now? Um, how does the repaving of the visitor center parking lot, um, align with the transportation improvement project? I'm, I'm reading here on that page that that project includes, uh, repaving the visitor center parking lot in collaboration with, um, Netherland Downtown Development Authorities.
Yeah. So that is, this is something that Emmett and I talked quite a bit about is yes, this is transportation improvement project. You know, when it gets, the sidewalks get put in, we're going to need to repay. I think one of his concerns is can it wait? He doesn't feel like it can wait. It's in such rough shape that there is a need now to do it. Um, the sidewalks itself won't impact the entire parking lot because the electrical has already been put down for the car chargers. And so of course, you know, right up against town hall in that area, yes, you'll have to repatch that, but you wouldn't need to do the entire parking lot. And so we would like to fund this. Now I don't, we, I don't recall conversations with the DDA as of late at least about splitting that cost. We of course can do so and bring it back to them and talk to them. Um, but, but Emmett does feel strongly that this should be done now because it's only, it's only going to get worse as we head into winter.
Yeah. So I was wondering the same thing, Trusty Blake Moore, and I'm wondering if it was already in the budget for the tips project to repave the visitor, visitor center parking lot, why can't we take it out of that budget?
It's not in the tips budget. The, the tips budget is purely for the sidewalks and that any sort of paving was going to be done within town budget and then in a collaboration with the DDA, but it is not actually a part of that budget.
Oh, okay. So it'd be good to check with NDDA, um, to see if they have any documentation about their, um, their participation in this. Um, what about the burying the overhead power lines, which is also part of the tip project? Do those go, i- is that still happening? Do those go under the pavement? And then what's the schedule for the tip project?
That's no longer a part of the tips project. It became too costly. We couldn't afford it within the project itself. So unfortunately we did have to move away from that. Um, we are required under tips and Dr. Cog to post the request for proposals and secure a contractor by January with the construction to be completed end of 2024. So we are, Dr., because we've had to delay a few times, uh, mainly due to Excel, unfortunately. Dr. Cog now has held us to that strong deadline of, of completion of grant end of year next year.
The, um, burying those lines, uh, came out to about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the four poles.
Yep. Sorry. I said 2024. I meant 2023. End of 2023, it must be done.
Um, and as far as the dust suppression up in Big Springs, um, with these heavy rains, unfortunately, all that good stuff is washing away. So, um, I don't know. If it's worth investing in it, if, if we're going to continue to have these kind of rains. So just something to consider.
So it's $20,000 a mile, right?
It's seven thousand. No.
It was twenty thousand dollars for two miles.
Yeah. Twenty thousand dollars covers two miles. It's seven thousand dollars a mile. Thank you, Trusty Corvallon. And so this gets us potentially two to three miles is what this will get us.
Um, this is Trusty Corvallon. I want to jump in and say that I think it's done a great job and I like the product. I've heard great things from my neighbors. They like the product. But right now, I think money should be spent on cleaning out these culverts and digging out the ditches and getting things ready for snow. And I'm not sure if now is the time to put 20,000 into dust mitigation or if we should wait until next June and do it all then. Because, you know, wishfully thinking in about a month, we're going to start getting snow on the roads. Granted, it might not be till December and then we'll be wishing we had the dust suppressant. So I'm not really sure, you know, because I don't know the weather. But, um, I like the product. I am more disturbed about like, we can't put this product on our road as our roads are right now. There's so much basic work that has to be done with like aligning the roads so that water goes in the right areas and cleaning culverts, getting things ready for winter. And I'm not sure if now is the time to do this. And I would like when Emmett Getbacks gets back in town, maybe he can come back to us and talk about this, why he wants to do this now as opposed to focusing on other tasks. And, you know, like, but it's not that I don't like the product.
Sure. Yeah. Uh, yeah. Unfortunately, this ended up falling on Emmett's PTO. Uh, we do anticipate bringing this back to you a few times. And so I'd be happy to, um, Emmett did put in his, uh, staff report. It's, it falls in there, kind of some of his arguments of why he'd like these two items. Um, but I'm happy to talk, have him come back and, and in addition, when he does come back, we can also speak to you about the, the plan for the drainage, uh, the culvert drainage and grading.
That would be good. What benefits does this stuff have? It holds the dust down? Does it hold the road together at all?
Well, I think that there were some initial reports that yes, it did a little bit. Um, you know, obviously it's not a miracle worker. It's not going to do long. It's not a forever solution, but it does definitely hold together, uh, the road in ways that it had me up. Please, Nikki.
Yeah. The, the product does have a little bit of polymer in it, which is a glue product. And so it does kind of bind the road together a little bit as it, it helps, uh, gives you a little bit of longevity to a grading operation. After you do this product, you put the, or after you do your grading operation, you put this product down. It does give you that longevity. Um, we saw the first time we applied it, we applied it on Navajo. We watched that road hold up for three months. Navajo never holds up that long. Navajo can typically hold up maybe a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
So the product does have that polymer agent in it, but it is mostly, uh, it's a dust suppressant. So it's got, um, that's what its intended uses.
Excellent. Yeah. It seems to work really well. I was going to point out that it seems that if we were going to apply the dust suppressant, we would grade first.
Yes.
Which would mean we would be doing the kind of work that Trusty Corvallon is mentioning before applying the dust suppressant anyway. We'd have to. That would be foolish to lock in.
Yes.
An ungraded road, right?
Correct.
So it seems like these two things go together pretty well.
Yep.
In sequence.
So Nikki, um, Tanya mentioned, uh, preparing the roads for the winter. And I was wondering if you could comment on that. What would happen if we don't do anything at this point? What?
Do the, do this product first?
Well, well, what does preparing the dirt roads for winter mean? I mean, what is necessary? Is it necessary?
Uh, it is necessary to prepare a road before winter. Um, it, it creates a, a heck of a maintenance nightmare on your plow trucks when you're hitting those ruts and potholes. Um, luckily for us, the last couple of years, we were able to grade roads nearly every month of the year, which is prior to this was unheard of. Once things are too frozen or there's too much snow, you just, you can't, you can't grade a road. Um, but yes, I imagine that when Emmett gets back, he is going to have his hands full. Um, grading miles of roads that we do have and, and preparing them for winter. We have to open up all of our drainage and all of our culverts before winter time, or every time we have a melt, it's, it's going to create an icy mess when it refreezes. Um, you also have problems with that water flowing underneath the surface of the road when you have an asphalt road. And then that is going to create a alligator or crocodileling of your asphalt. Um, so water is your worst enemy. And Emmett, when he gets back, I know that I know that he is going to have to force the water to go where we want it to go instead of staying on our roads. So this product, the dust oppressants, I understand, um, it has been a very wet year this year. And I, I, I do see the benefit of waiting and to do this product in the spring, but I also see the benefit of, you know, knowing how dry our September, October. I think it would benefit us to do it now, especially if he is planning on grading and, and ditch pulling and doing all the work that he is planning on doing, to then be able to go behind a freshly graded, nice, smooth surface and put some of this dust suppressant down, which does have that little bit of binding agent in it. It would, it would benefit, I think, for the winter time.
Do we know how long the dust suppressant works for?
It really depends on how wet it is. Um, so what we just did up in Big Springs, um, actually haven't driven it to know if it's even still there. Yeah, it, it goes away. So it really kind of, I mean, it can.
This is Tanya. It is still there, just so you know.
That's great to hear. So it can last three months or more. Um, and it also, so it depends on wet and it depends on how people are driving that road. Speed kills, uh, in all kinds of ways. But, um, it does, it kills our roads. There are two things that kill our roads and that's water and speed. So when people are driving like either people that you don't want to behind you, um, it, it, they're, they wreck in your road. When you see people doing those spin outs or the burnouts and you see the dust cloud, there goes your road. There it went. So this dissipates and actually does help hold the road in place a little bit.
Thank you for all that, Nikki.
Yeah, Nikki, thank you so much. Glad you're here. Okay. Right. The last is, uh, utilities, uh, ORC services. So as a reminder, as I shared previously, ORC services are covered by the savings and salaries. However, it's important for us to code it to the appropriate line item, which would be an ORC services line item. Um, we don't currently have a budget for that, which is why we're recommending putting $25,000 in the water and sewer ORC budgets. So we can appropriately code direct discharge LLC invoices to that area. Direct discharge LLC discharges kind of a flat rate of fifty seven, fifty six, fifty seven hundred, but they do charge us more for projects. So for example, their whole team had to come up and work on our SAM filters and they were here all day and they brought a crew of four. That is an extra expense that we see. Now that we're fully staffed, our team is very capable of doing a lot of those projects ourselves. And I did speak with Dave Lewis about that, but there will be every once in a while projects that do kind of require the whole team on deck. Um, and that is where we'll see added charges, which is why we did it at, at a little bit of a higher rate to anticipate some of those big changes, such as the grit removal system installation and, uh, headworks. We recently had our fine screen break and so we need to do some work at headworks as well as just other maintenance repairs that are needed. So. All right.
And those utility funds, I imagine are healthy enough that they have the extra bandwidth for that budget.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are we doing capacity wise? Has that changed at all since, uh, the new regime got started?
So Dave is actually looking into those numbers. So he is not sure that we're at the capacity that maybe has been previously communicated, um, where we were like sixty, seventy. He actually thinks we might be closer to fifty, sixty. And we potentially are on track to expand when we anticipated expanding. And so, um, he's looking at the way in which the figures were calculated and he does plan, once he's done that work, to come to you and speak to you about his recommendations for future infrastructure needs, um, but is not sure that we are on a must expand tomorrow type crisis level.
That's good.
Yes.
Is that both for water and wastewater?
Correct.
That's excellent.
Yep.
So he's talking about way we, ways we measure, but also engineering approaches to what we've been doing. Thank you.
Yes, we are changing the way the, the, uh, plants operate slightly in order to maximize on the kind of the organic process. We can previously have been using quite a bit of chemicals. And so he wants to operate more with the bugs, at least is that wastewater and try to not use as much chemicals, uh, to go through the process. Um, so we're making quite a few changes and, um, seeing how those work, you know, with every change or there's going to, some things are going to get better, some things are going to get worse. And so really he's evaluating that with his team on what changes can we make? What, what additions and subtractions can we do from the chemical standpoint, um, to really get this to run in the most organic fashion that it can?
When's the next time, um, that we'll get updated on this one?
So I think that I, I hope to be able to connect with Dave, um, about the infrastructure presentation in the next month or two, because it'll be important for you as we head into budget season. So I met with, uh, Dave and Andrew Sparn, our JVA engineer specific to water and wastewater. And so we're working through those final recommendations on 2023 budget for infrastructure for utilities. So probably more during budget season is when I anticipated Dave coming with me to a meeting.
Okay. And we still need to cover, um, water, right?
Well, so that, that was water, ORC for water and sewer. So.
Waste and, okay.
Yeah. I mean, same with water. It's, so obviously some of the water things are like pond lining. Those are things we've talked about before. Those have been CIP projects, um, but those are, they continue to be in need. But oftentimes we're having to move funds to address, uh, a pump breaking, which is why running these plants in a, in a way where we're not seeing, the grit's a big thing on the pumps. So running the plants in a way where we're not seeing the infrastructure break down because of grit and sand and things getting through that shouldn't be.
Great. Okay. Today I reached out to both senators and our Colorado Senator and Representative about what we can expect to see out of these, these funds that were just approved this week. Uh, Colorado got a, a major amount of money for what they're calling, um, drought resistance, drought resilience. And I'm just wondering, as we look at this, are we going to be able to make a case for pulling some of those, pulling some of that money into doing the things that we deferred on lining those ponds and such?
Potentially, yeah. I'd like to visit that with Dave and Andrew, but I do think that it's possible.
Okay. Well, the requests are out. Um, I'll find out what, what kind of funds they can bring to the table for our town.
Okay. Cool. All right. So the, the last one on here is staff salaries. So what we are throwing out to you for consideration is providing all staff with a six percent cost of living increase, you know, obviously recognizing inflation and that town staff historically don't, they get around two percent of cost of living. We do feel like six percent is appropriate to get them to livable wages, not necessarily competitive wages. These are, these are just acknowledging that the cost of living is so much higher. So six percent across the board. We're also recommending a four percent increase for employees who did not receive at least four percent in wage increases in 2022, separate from a promotion. So quite a few employees, specifically being the public works team, did receive raises, many of which are four percent or higher. So we're talking about community center, APN team, visitor center, and some of those who got promoted, who didn't get then a secondary raise on top of that. Um, so that's a merit base. That's based on performance and can be distributed by their supervisor based on what's appropriate. Um, we did calculations based on the remaining nine pay periods that are left in the year. So what you see listed on this slide again is just salaries. We, the taxes and the retirement are in the document itself. Do I want to read through all these? I can, you're good. Okay. A couple of things I just want to point out. So the visitor center increase also includes increasing how much we pay. Uh, currently a representative makes thirteen dollars an hour. We're really struggling to recruit when you've got our neighbors at the lodge paying eighteen. So we feel sixteen dollars an hour because these are temporary positions, but then increasing the manager from sixteen to eighteen. but then increasing the manager from 16 to 18. Um, and also under utilities, we are recommending somewhat adding a new position. So what we're recommending is combining the billing specialist, um, for utilities with the financial team, because they need supports of accounts payable and payroll. Um, I do feel after doing the billing specialist job for utilities that it can be combined with other functions, and would like to see that, um, the position would be partially funded out of utilities and administration would be our recommendation. However, utilities could float the positions right now if we were to hire and pursue that. They could be coded 100% to utilities, and then next year, do the 50-50 split.
Are we coming with hiring?
So we haven't posted the position.
Okay.
What we're, what I'm proposing is this new position. I don't, the reason I took over billing, utility billing, is I really wanted to see what the function of the job was and, and truly whether it could be combined with other, uh, functions, and I, and I do think it can be. I think there are a lot of things that the billing specialist did that really should tie back to the utilities team itself, and some things that we can kind of streamline a little better. And I do believe that that billing specialist's utility has the capacity to take on what the finance team does, who are incredibly overloaded, being Christie and Rita.
You okay with that, Rita?
Rita was all about it. So here they are. We are recommending actually two positions, though, for you. There, you have a billing support specialist, uh, $22 an hour for utility billing, payroll accounts payable. And we'd like for consideration of an administrative assistant, and this would be the person who manages the front desk operations and supports with other departments. Um, and you know Peter is, uh, a jack of all trades. He does some incredible things, but we do feel that his talents could be used in more of a community outreach capacity. Obviously, the goal, I think, of every board and town staff is to really strengthen that relationship with the community, and if we had a dedicated personnel to work on those community relations, continue to do the heavy social media present, but the surveys and the outreach, answering questions in timely manner, making sure the information gets to department heads, and really having a dedicated person. We'd like to allow Peter the space to work on that while having an administrative assistant to deal with the day-to-day front desk at town hall.
So it'll be you and me at the front desk?
Right, so Tom and I will run the front desk, and we did it the other day, and we had a great time. So that's another position we're asking for consideration now, um, to free up Peter. Otherwise, it's also something we would come back to you, uh, in 2023, but these are what we're asking for consideration for.
Outreach is extraordinarily important. Everything we've talked about tonight and over the last few weeks involves community outreach. I, I don't think there's anybody better to do it. When you sit behind the partition and sign checks and listen to Peter, you understand how important that is.
I guess it would be useful in subsequent discussions to see job descriptions for both of what Peter would be doing and the administrative assistant. Yeah.
Yes, yeah. So we didn't get into the, the details, and that kind of was the hope, is that you guide us with what information you want us to bring back, but we would be happy.
So far, this is the only thing on the supplemental budget that I'm not convinced by.
Okay, fair enough.
Standby.
Right. So here's, oh, sorry.
Tiny, uh, anything before we move on? We haven't heard from you for a while. Any questions?
Oh, well, yeah, I had a couple of questions. Um, we went through a lot. I mean, the ultimate question is, can we afford this? And if, I mean, because obviously I want to give, say, yes, yes, yes to everything, but, um, it wasn't in our original budget, so this is all gonna come out of the, the excess budget that we have, like our reserves, correct?
I, I can speak to that a little bit, because I, um, studied this a bit and then, um, talked with Rita and then Miranda this morning. And, um, the in, increase in the supplemental budget for 2022 is $400,000. Out of that, approximately 300,000 is recurring costs, operational costs, things that we'll have to pay from here on out, the increase in salaries, the, um, uh, new hires, um, et cetera. So that's just for four months of the year. Multiplying that by three, next year, that would be $900,000. So, um, the, 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 um, general fund balance, I believe, is 800,000 right now, and this primarily comes out of the general fund. So my concern is if we hire people, if we give, um, employees, raises, and then come the end of 2023, we have to lay off and cut pay, I don't think that would be a good thing to do. What Tom has suggested, I think, and, and Miranda, um, came up with some numbers would be a bonus, and that would be 5% for 2022. And then in 2023, when we have, uh, more funds through the, um, uh, tax, increased taxes, we could.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, yes. I, I, yeah, so I'd like to just clarify. So we did talk, you know, we realized we're coming at you with some really heavy numbers, and it's, I think a lot of it is, how does it play into 2023, and we recognize that. And so I think for me, there needs to be some sort of financial compensation and recognition of this team. This team has been incredible. They've put their head down, they've worked hard, they've done what they needed to do, and I want to compensate them. Of course, my goal is in salaries, but I do recognize that there is like kind of a bit of a fear of the unknown of how does it play into the budget. So my ask would be, if you're not ready for us to come back to you with proposed budgets of up to 5%, and again, that being pulled out kind of based on years of service, you know, other increases, to still again balance that out, but at least do a one-time bonus for this team. Um, different municipalities have done, you know, Boulder County just did $1,200 for their employees. Like, I'm, I'm not looking at a couple hundred dollars. I am looking at large-scale bonuses to at least acknowledge and appreciate this team while we go into 2023 salary discussions.
I think that's fair.
Um, my other question, uh, well, then I'm, are we approving bonuses, or are we approving a change of salary for, that would continue into 2023?
It's just a discussion. So originally, we were asking salaries, and I did have conversations with Mayor Pro Tim Mahold and Trustee Blake Moore of, of a little bit of that concern of not knowing the 2023 numbers. So my, my kind of counterpoint to that, and what I was prepared to come with, is if we're not ready to do salaries, I would ask for the approval from the board to come back to you with our recommended one-time bonuses for 2022, up to 5%.
Yeah, this is like a little bit scary when you say, uh, it's a $900,000 increase in our budget, when even at best-case scenario, our tax increases won't even cover that much. Or maybe they will, if we get everything. But, um, if, what if we didn't get any of them, then we have to, nobody's gonna take a pay cut. So I do think that maybe right now, until we find out what happens in November, it's better billed as a bonus as opposed to a change of salary. Because of that, we, we wouldn't be able to afford to keep people for 2023.
There, there's another factor in here, Tam, uh, Tanya, and that is that, um, the, um, police department, uh, salary is considerably less than what is shown in the supplemental budget for 2022, because we're down on staff. And so Rita, um, developed a revised, um, uh, salary plan for the, um, police department, given the knowledge we have right now, and ramping up to, um, four positions. And that shows an excess of, um, 62,723. Um, so we would not need the supplemental ba, uh, budget for the police department wages. However, um, she does write, and Miranda writes, that we would have, um, uh, need a supplemental budget for background checks in Boulder County Sheriff's Office.
A thousand. Yeah, and that's on, this is part of this. So that's, I mean, obviously, we have to pay the bills that we owe. And that brings me to my second conversation, is about the lawyer. We have to pay her for all these cases we have. And I'm just curious, out of curiosity, if, if, if I could get, or the public can get access to how her time is spent, like which case is costing this much? And there's been, I mean, more than one this year, so I'm just, out of curiosity, I'd like to have that itemized and lined.
So that's, that's. It's protected under attorney-client privilege, and so the Board of Trustees can look at it, but it is not a public record.
Okay, and so is that something that we could look at, out of just kind of curiosity, to know what all these cases are costing us?
Yes, we can send that to the Board of Trustees confidentially.
Okay, um, I mean, I definitely would love to know, but obviously, we have to pay her for her time, and so some of these things that you're bringing, there's so many that you brought up, are obviously, yes, we have to pay our bills. And then some of the other ones are, of course, I want to, but I don't want to promise money that we don't have. So, I mean, if we can give people this money for 2022 and have it not necessarily be tied into 23 budget, and this comes out of our savings, then I'm all for it. Um, but I just don't know if we can commit to maintaining these pay rates if we don't get the money that we are asking for with the taxes. But everybody else can chime in, of course.
So I, I, this is Rita. I'm the town treasurer. I did want to just explain a little bit more on what Karen had said. You know, she had mentioned, yeah, we, um, budgeted to go into the whole 400,000. Yeah, and most of that is salaries, right? It's what you were saying, 300,000, take that times three. You really cannot do that. Because really, with the new information, we have 100,000 right off, comes off this supplemental budget that I had prepared for the PD, right? So that is, is that where you 300 came from? Because a lot of those other items are just one-time items we're asking.
So what I, what I have, when I was talking about the police department?
No, you were talking about, overall, it's 400,000 that were going.
Oh, 400,000.
But then you went down to 300.
300, based on, um, Miranda's, uh, said that 100,000 of that approximately was non-recurring, so projects.
Okay, what I'm saying, though, on top of that, the 100,000 that I have budgeted in here before I, we had more information, 100,000 plus, you have to look at employer's taxes, insurance, and retirement as well, will come off, so it's more savings. That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, yeah, that, that occurred to me, so it's more than, um, a remaining amount of 62,000. So, um, as far as the costs that are associated with personnel in the police department.
So, right, so regardless, I think, obviously, when I put this together, you know, it was quick, it was 10%, sick, up to 10% for, um, salaries, employer taxes, insurance, and retirement. So it's really the, the salaries that are kind of a guesstimate, right? And I think they're rather high. Of course, the PD, now that we know, all that is, is not gonna happen this year.
Oh, so what you're saying is, in the supplemental budget right now, we have a, um, seven, um, uh, police officers, and we're not gonna have that this year, so it's gonna be about.
What I, yeah, the new information I have, none of this will happen that I have in PD. We're fine with the budget that we have for this year.
Yes.
Right.
So I realize none of you can see this screen, and I'm so sorry. Those online can probably see it. So what this, what this document shows is, we did some calculations on looking at what potentially pay for a chief, a sergeant, an officer, and a clerk, which really gets us like in a good spot to keep going. That's, um, for the remainder of the year, would be 126,000 and some change. With the current budget we have, and the savings that Trustee Blake Moore is talking about, it actually leaves us with a remaining amount of 62,000. So that, so in essence, what we're saying is that the, the potential, the supplemental is not needed for that salary because of what we're capable of hiring for this year that's realistic. It is next year, though, that you're looking from going to, from 380,000 to 525,000 under this type of structure.
That'll be another discussion.
That's for later, right.
And what Rita was saying is, there's actually more than in, uh, excess of 62,000 because associated with those wages are, um, the taxes and insurance and all that. So, so, so what I propose to Miranda and Rita is that we, scale back the supplemental budget to necessities for 2022. And come back with a new, um, proposal to us at the next, um, meeting that we have on the budget.
So my concern with the word necessity is that we are looking at some departments and lack of staff in those departments as a necessity. We don't want to create new necessities by not getting ahead of these issues as we haven't in the past.
Yeah, great.
So there are other departments that may become understaffed in the very near future if we do not address the problems we know that we have in salaries and wages, right? Like, that is a real issue, and so.
I agree with you, Eric.
That in terms of classifying things as necessity or not necessity, I think that's very difficult to do, very dangerous to do, because we're looking back now on, on a problem, right? Rather than looking ahead on what might be to come. So my, my big question is, um, yeah, sure.
So, so, um, you're talking about not, um, paying adequate wages to maintain the employees that we currently have. Um, and so what, um, the concern there is that we, we can't do that. You know, we might have to, like, reduce their wages in the future because we don't have the increase in the budget for, um, 2023, 2024. And so what was proposed, um, by Tom and Miranda, I think, was a, um, bonus for this year, which would be 10% of their yearly sa, salary.
5% of it, up to 5% of their. But we like 10%. Karen, if that's what you're offering, we're all for it. Five, up to 5% of their annual salaries. No, not all our salary. We would take their annual salary, or 10%. Right, I mean, it's, but it's a substantial bonus, you know, in, in comparison to maybe a couple hundred dollars here or there. I mean, we are looking for, that would be employees potentially receiving, uh, 1,000 or potentially up to $2,000 for maybe our lower-end employees. Uh, that goes up, of course, as you go up in wages. Um, but taking into consideration, of course, the spectrum of length of time and whether or not increases have already been provided.
Right.
So before you come back next time, what do we need to know? Uh, or what do you, what do you think you need?
I think that's the question, is like, do you want us to come back with bonuses and plan? But I think for us, it's, we're roll, we'd like to roll in salaries into 2023, and we're coming back with this. Um, but, but then are you just telling us, like, right, hold off to do your salary increases in the 2023 budget, but come back to us with a proposal for bonuses, and we're happy to do so?
I would not advocate, hold, uh, I think bonuses need to be paid.
Yeah, I agree. Let's do the bonuses, for sure.
I mean, it is, it, I, I, I guess I wonder if there's something in between a 5% bonus and, and a 10% pay increase, right, which is what we're seeing here. Like, tho, those to me seem to be pretty far apart in a lot of ways.
Right, so we were doing 6% cost of living, and so that was across the board. So we could come back 6%, we could also come back to, with kind of the, the spectrum, so you can see it.
Right, I guess what I'm saying is, like, if you, if you ca, like, there's the potential for, like, 6% cost of living increase happening, and us leaving it at that until the 2023 budget rolls around you, and, and supplementing the rest with a bonus. Like, I'm saying that it doesn't have to be one or the other completely, right?
Absolutely.
We can, we can have a show of faith in our, in our staff, that, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna make this effort, um, but one that we can afford that comes in under, you know, the, the numbers that we'd be projecting. Uh, and then supplement the rest with a, with a, with a bonus. I mean, just saying that that seems to me to be a potential way to go.
Yeah, we've got nine pay periods left this year. I think we need to do something immediately.
Yeah.
I'm a little confused. I thought she was asking for a 6% raise or a bonus.
Um, somewhere from 6% to 10% raise. And then what we're, what we had talked about from a bonus was five, because we're not, your raise that you're seeing is for nine pay periods. If you're gonna do a bonus, we want to look at their entire pay in a year and bonus off of their full annual salary, which would still be high. And so that's why we're not doing the full 10% of their annual salary, because that's not how we calculated this 10% raise. And so they don't totally translate.
But a bonus would not put us in a position where it would roll over into 2023, right? But, but we could, we could put ourselves marginally into a position where some pay increases would roll over into 2023. This seems to me to be, the, the reason we would do this is because, eh, it's a retention issue, right, for staff. Uh, it's, it's also to, to, to recognize that we don't want to create a situation like we have with the police department right now, again, uh, by, by essentially underpaying and then losing people and not being able to replace them. Uh, maybe it keeps people around a bit longer, and in 2023, we can talk about this larger, these larger numbers.
So just a couple of details and then one big point. So if we gave the, the bonus in 2022, we will be working on the 2023 budget here shortly. And so, and we'll know if we have our, um, tax increase measure approved before the end of the year. And so then, yeah, for example, employees would receive their bonus the last paycheck of the year, and then they would know that they, they're gonna have a raise coming up. The other thing that, um, The other thing that Miranda suggested was a compensation study.
Yeah.
You know, because I, I'm asking, you know, what are the comparables here? And she did tell me some from, that were kind of shockingly high, from Gilpin County and Boulder County, where she believes employees are most likely to go.
Indeed.
I do have a good sense of what the police department salary ranges are, and we're still considerably low than Boulder County. But I think the compensation study, and Miranda said it's, she is not comfortable, she doesn't have the knowledge to do a compensation study. But I think it might look at things like, you know, experience and qualifications and I don't, all that.
Right. But we can't hemorrhage people while we're doing studies on them, their salaries.
I do have some preliminary data. A lot of that is county-based. You know, I think that that's a challenge. I did tell trustee Blake Moore, often if our employees are leaving, they're going to go to Boulder County, they're going to go to Gilpin County. They have a lot more resources, and we recognize that. But you also have to take that into consideration that for many of our current positions, they could go to Gilpin and make twice what they're making here. And so that, we're never going to hit that. But, but not, you know, being realistic of what our neighbors pay, what local municipalities of our same size pay, and you have to take that into consideration when going into this. Right? Gilpin County has some resources.
So rather than deciding now what the wage increase would be, we'd do a compensation study and start that in 2023. And I think we would cover the police department as well as all the other departments, or no?
Yeah. And if, if, so Central City does a compensation study about every two years, and if we did play off of the, the firm that they use, a lot of that data potentially exists, and they would just expand it a little bit further.
We need one in like a month.
Right. So we could talk to them and see if they can utilize the compensation studies that they've already used and just expand off of them for.
How much does it cost?
I don't know. I mean, trust me.
I think we just know we need to give people raises, and I don't think we really need.
I know. I'm very suspicious of studies.
Like, we can't bear, let's just give them what we can afford, and if we can do the, what you're asking, then let's do that. I just, I mean, we can give it to everybody for right now, and then we'll.
For the cost of a study?
I don't want to do a study.
I'll take, I'm interested in looking at a compensation study to see if I think it's worth paying for it. So I'll take a look.
Why? I don't see, we know they need raises. If Gilpin and Boulder are paying more, significantly more, then even a 10% raise isn't even cutting it. So, I mean, obviously, we need to give a 10% raise. So if we can afford to do so, we should do so. I don't know what a study is going to tell us, other than that. I mean.
One thing I would like to see, if this is brought back personally, and I mean, if no one else wants to see it, I'm cool with that, too. But, you know, if, what I would like to see is what, you know, a merit increase with the parameters that you've laid out here, plus a bonus would look like.
Merit or cost of living?
I think merit.
Okay.
So what is merit based on time, time worked here?
No, merit's based on performance, and so it'd be up to the department head supervisor to decide. And oftentimes, what happens with merit is a supervisor may choose to give like 2% now and hold 2%.
Yeah.
And give 2% at the completion of a project or completion of a task. And it creates that incentive kind of as the year moves.
Yeah. I mean, because you're, you're proposing here a 4% merit increase for employees who have not received at least a 4% increase in wages in 2022, separate from any promotion, right? So that is part of what, what we've baked in here.
Yes.
It seems to me that it's this cost of living adjustment that is something that a, a study would really help with, because that's really what this, what it is about, right? It's about cost of living in the area and what's other jobs that are similar pay. So maybe we, maybe there's a scenario, I'm just saying, I'm not saying this is what I want to do, I'm just saying, maybe there's a scenario where we look at a merit increase under these parameters that would help those staff that this was designed to help in the first place, right? And a bonus. I don't know if it's 5%, maybe it's less if we're doing the merit increase.
Check.
But maybe a bonus. What that looks like number-wise, and then, you know, how that, where that puts us for 2023, you know, and how that would impact it, would be kind of nice to know.
We can bring that back. So.
Just as another option for this.
Yeah.
Because I am more and more concerned just about, like, it doesn't matter how many projects we have, it doesn't matter how many services we attempt to offer, if the staff that are offering those services and completing those projects are not adequately compensated and are unhappy at their jobs, and we're not creating an appropriate environment for them to work in, all the, all the rest of the budget is irrelevant, right? So this really does, I think, matter.
So, so it seems like qualifications would be a factor in compensation?
Well, but don't you guys have starting pay? And then you give people raises, so obviously, someone who's been here longer, if you're given a 10% raise, is going to get a bigger raise than somebody who's starting.
Right. At the end of the year, we've always done a cost of living merit combination. And so this last year was 6%. And so that was distributed by the supervisor. We also provide a small bonus as people obtain certifications, but that's really a public works thing. And I would say, if anything, that's a utilities thing. That's, the acquisition of new certs is not an opportunity that parks and streets see. And so we don't necessarily have the pay structure in that regards. I think really, every staff member waits until December to see what they're going to get. And sometimes we have that opportunity, because we're short-staffed, to maybe pay more mid-year. But really, your fully-staffed teams, like administration and the community center, are never, typically never going to see mid-year increases unless they're promoted. More often than not, though, they're going to wait until the end of the year and go a whole year. Despite maybe more workload, they're still going to go a whole year without ever seeing an increase.
What about degrees, like, you know, masters in accounting or, I mean?
No. So I think obviously, it's the job itself. You know, some jobs may require that, but that's not necessarily a qualification for the majority of our departments, is to have any sort of higher education degrees. You know, a lot of our staff do, but there's no compensation that comes with that.
I mean, my point here is that you've put this bullet point, right, this additional 4% there, because those employees of the, those staff members in town exist.
Correct. That is your administration, your visitor center, and your community center.
So, so that's the thing. Because it, it, there are staff who have not received at least 4% increase in wages in 2022, separate from any promotion, and there are staff that are, that have, right? It seems to me an equitable way to go, to make something like this happen now, hold off on the cost of living adjustment, and calculate a bonus, and see what that looks like budget-wise.
Right. A bonus for 2022, and then you were proposing a merit increase? And if that could be fit into our current, our 2023 budget without, with whatever funds we have at that point? And we don't know what those will be right now.
Right.
Right. Because obviously, in community center administration, you don't have savings, because we've all been thankfully fully-staffed. And so that's great. But yes, it is something where we would be giving you basically your starting figure of going into 2023, because those two departments, yeah, have been fully-staffed.
Yeah.
Can Mountain States help with the, with salary guidance?
You know, so employers, it's a employers' council now. Employers' council does have some resources, CML has some resources. They are not for public review, and so they have, so I am getting them, but we'll have to share them privately with the board of trustees. They're meant just for individuals with public plans with them, contracts with them. You make them public, it kind of defeats the point. So, again, I do have data, but most of my data is coming to you from a county, often a county level, because that is our, when you look at our neighbors, you know, I just, I really caution, you can't compare us to what's happening in Idaho Springs or Lyons, because that's not where our staff's going to go. Our staff, so I, I want that balance of what are our neighbors paying versus similar-sized communities with similar-sized budgets. We're never going to be able to pay, you know, six figures for every employee. We recognize that. But let's get, if they're here because they want to be here, maybe, right, never say never, I'm sorry, we will. I mean, our employees are here because they want to be here. I mean, every employee who works for Nederlin realizes that they could go elsewhere, but it's because of their passion. And that's really important for me, is to acknowledge that, again, if it's a bonus now and potentially a merit increase for those who didn't get it, plus that this big conversation in 2023, really want that to be the central focus of the 2023 budget, and realizing that perhaps we forego a handful of projects because we're willing to invest in the team that's here and have stucked by our sides. I mean, we have 10-plus-year employees. We did lose some of our longer-term, but Dawn and Cynthia and Nikki, you know, going on numerous, you know, seven to 15 years with us, longtime employees.
Favor needs to be returned.
Yeah.
So, and, and how does our total compensation package compare to other towns and cities and counties? Well, what I mean is like vacation and, and return on all of insurance. Do we have like maybe a better package?
We, I mean, we've got a really great PTO policy. You know, I think PTO is accrued and it's wonderful, but often rarely used. So I will tell you that we have to work hard to get employees down to their cap. You can roll over their max from year to year. It's like, hey, you have to take some, Rita, you have to take some time off just to get to their cap. And we're talking 160 hours getting to their cap. And so we see rolling year to year. And that's a lot of being short-staffed. It's hard to take time. And so while the PTO looks great on paper, the reality of taking it is not there. We would be very competitive if we ended up in a para program for true retirement. We do have the 457K, and we have other benefits, which are, are great, but, you know, we're not doing long-term investment in the retirement of our personnel. You know, para is a big, it's expensive, but it's a.
Para would be great.
And para would make us, set us aside from other municipalities in the mountains, because not, I'm not aware of any of them having that.
Can I say that if you're a new employee, we are very competitive? As a, as a brand-new person coming into Public Works, anyway, I can't speak to administrative, and definitely looks like the visitor center's off a notch. But Public Works, we're pretty competitive when it comes to starting. You're looking at us, though, spending hundreds and thousands of dollars training people to get them to a point where we want them to be so that they're capable of maintaining our roads, of maintaining our parks, of writing grants, of doing the things that we need people to do, mitigating forests and all of these things. You, you spend, the town spends hundreds of thousands of dollars doing this, and then they jump ship.
Yep.
Because the guys that are really, literally right in the same yard as us will pay you $10 an hour more, plus a better benefits package in the end.
So is there some way to skew the increase to the folks that have been here longer?
Yeah, I think that's where, you know, I, I, yes, I mean, you already, you already see that. You're already going to see that spectrum. You're going to see the employees who have been here longer, and then, of course, people in department head positions are going to be making a different amount than their peers. So that already exists. And as you do a 10%, you're only going to, you know, or whatever it is, you're only going to further that. I, I do think that, you know, a lot of your longtime employees are in some sort of department head capacity at this point, and so they're going to be more of the higher-paid employees.
Good. Do, do we, I think we're largely through this, or do people still have questions? We, you have some homework to do. We're going to visit this again.
Well, I guess so that's, obviously, we have direction on salaries. I think the question is, like, what about those projects? What would you like us, are there ones that you feel like, wait on them for 2023? We're investing in these ones, we're not in these ones? I think that's also helpful information.
So, I feel like I've forgotten already all these projects.
I will, I'll bring them back up.
Springs. What were some of the other ones?
So we had the community center grease trap and ADA doors.
That sounds good. That's important.
Sidewalk, par paving, dust mitigation, the visitor center for supplies for resale and their new sign, legal background checks, ORC in Boulder County Sheriff's Office. I'll share this on the screen, but.
Yeah, all that seems like it's important.
Well, uh, let's see. The, the feedback I got from Miranda was the Nederlin Community Center needed to be done, and the visitor center. I understand both of those. The visitor center, they have kind of a cash flow problem, where they, they sold, they sold so many frozen, so much frozen dead guy stuff, that, they purchased so much and they sold it all. And so instead of, so there, they had more purchases this year than they've ever had before, right around the March-April timeframe. And so they've run out of money for making the purchases, which they'll, they'll get paid for.
Yeah, yeah. So that, I mean, that's, that's an investment. I mean, we're going to make money on that.
So it is, yeah, it is something that has to be done, otherwise all the shelves will be bare.
Yeah. No.
And I just want to.
Yeah, go ahead, Rita.
Like I had mentioned in my aim for, in my July financials, the visitor center's year-to-date revenue as of July is 85, 81,000. We budgeted for the whole year 76,000. So we're at July above the revenue that we had budgeted for the whole year. So, I mean, to me, that's.
Yeah. Are we charging enough for the merchandise?
Yeah, I would say, yeah, I would say we are. You know, I think Teresa has a good pulse on that of like when to adjust, when, and she works with Peter on that. You know, I don't think we're undercharging for any.
Yeah. I found if they had more shirts in the size that I wanted, I would have bought more shirts.
We, we have different merchandise, though. Before, we bought from Duck Company, which was a large national corporation, and now we're buying local. And so I'm sure the mark, you know, the, how we're going to mark up the supplies for resale is, is very different than when we had to do this massive bulk order through Duck. Teresa is ordering from Elevated Impressions, which is a local company, I believe, based out of Rollinsville. And then, again, everything else she sells has some sort of local tie to it.
Yeah, I could definitely support that.
Well, I do have to say that the, that the two projects that are, don't seem to be as higher priority at the moment are the streets projects. And maybe, maybe the bias is because Emmett is not here to convince us that they are critical, and other parks, other, you know, department heads are here. But, yeah, repaving the visitor center, when that's going to be done with the TIPS project, and dust suppressants as we move into winter, hopefully. They don't feel like hugely high priorities if we are looking for places to trim this, especially in light of the issue with wages and salaries, so.
I will tell you that Emmett, obviously, I was like, okay, if I'm forced to choose, he's going to choose investing in his staff. And so he, you know, if asked, you know, what's the priority for him, that, and I think every department head will say that. And so he recognized that this is a big ask, and, and I'm, I'm speaking for him, but I think that if asked to just delay this for next year, he's very open to doing so. You know, the supplemental was before every department head, and it was like, what do you want to ask for? And so I do feel confident that Emmett will come back and support. And, and May, though, maybe he does need some financial assistance with grading and drainage and culverts, and perhaps that's a different ask that we come forward with. I'm not sure.
What's the total on those two projects?
50,000.
Okay, that's significant.
Yeah. It's a chunk.
Then the background checks have to be in there?
Yes.
And also the Boulder County Sheriff's Office extra-duty officer pay.
There's not much we can trim.
Yeah. There's nothing we can do about that.
So are we down to the essentials?
Yeah. And then I, we'd like to do sidewalks, we'd like to put in the supplemental budget. You know, I think it, it's not a huge expense and could be floated, but we're trying not to go into the negative in any line item, so it's cleaner to put it into the supplemental.
Yeah.
I'm full, I'm full in support of these sidewalks because of the legality of them.
Should I get him, Tanya? She's fully in support of sidewalks.
Okay, got it. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and we pretty much have to, by law. You can't let those deteriorate, because we know about it.
Oh, that's, that's a small.
Nikki, will you turn your mic on?
It's 3,500 max. It's actually, the quote was, I can't remember, 33 and some change. I put in an extra couple hundred because there was a couple extra spots that I wanted them to hit. So, um, yeah, 3,500.
Okay, we put, we're 45 minutes into this. Do we have what we need for for you?
Yes, I think the only ask is, are you comfortable setting? So you need to set a date for a public hearing for a supplemental budget. Are you comfortable doing that? Would you like to wait and do that at the next meeting to set that public hearing date?
I think we should do it.
Like to wait.
Yeah, I'd say let's, you and I look at the agenda. We got to do it soon.
So the board will have to make that decision altogether about when the public hearing would occur. And so originally, we put in here September 6th. So that way we can publicly notice it. We need to give ourselves plenty of time to do so.
I think it'll be, we'll have at least one new board member. Now, will he be seated by then?
Yes, because we'll bring this back on August 30th. But we would be publicly noticing now that the hearing is on September 6th. I don't know if you're ready for that.
Yeah, otherwise, the these numbers get less and less accurate the longer we wait.
Yeah.
You know?
Rita only wants to calculate it a handful of times.
And so just so you know, myself personally, it's just, Tanya, I think we should put bonuses on this right now so that the staff feels appreciated.
It's a discussion item, so we can't exactly.
And we can't give you those figures. We need to come back to you on August 30th with those figures. We can't do that right here, right now.
But we can schedule the hearing for the 6th now.
Right, and we come back to you one more time with a discussion and then you have an official hearing for voting on September 6th.
So I'd move that we schedule a hearing for September 6th.
So what?
You're doing it not a four because it's a discussion item, but.
So I, um, yeah, so, so we've had a motion and a second. So now there can be discussion according to our.
And there is no action, so there should really shouldn't be.
Oh, oh, okay. So do do we need, what, um, do we need to schedule that so many days in it being a hearing? And what is that?
15, so I need to be able to do a publicly noticed, a public notice 15 days before the hearing as well as eight days before the hearing. So I need to know if it's if it's September 6th, I need to know today.
Yeah, then, yeah, okay.
Mission accomplished. Do we have more or can we move on or?
I think. Rita, I'm good.
You're good.
We're good.
Do the calculation.
Tanya?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. Okay, so we're, we close out seven dot two. Let's move on to.
Oh, yes, thank you. Public comment.
Kathleen Chipai, 31-year resident, 19-year business owner. So I guess I, I guess I want to see more clarity in job descriptions because from my memory until Karen Garrity was the town administrator, we didn't have like assistants to the clerk and assistants to the administrator. But I thought that Peter was hired as assistant to the town administrator and that Macy was the clerk. And then the other day when I went in there, I was surprised to see Peter is at the front desk when I'm expecting Macy's at the front desk. So I guess I'm confused because now if Peter's not going to be the administrative assistant and now we're, we've created a new job description, I guess for Peter's, and now we're looking for a new town administrative assistant. So, you know, I have said that I think Nederland has too many employees for a long time now. And I just want to get clarity on what's going on with job description. Also, Macy's been, as far as I knew, was hired as clerk, but Miranda yet is doing core requests, which I feel is infringing on on Macy's job. So so I guess I want clarity there. And then I I'm going to dispute the fact that any invoice is attorney-client privileged. According to Colorado Record Retention, all invoices are public record. And I am really sick and tired of keeping what the town attorney's time is being spent on secret from the voters. And I think it's baloney. And you're the only one, Miranda, you and Jen, who have declared that the invoice is confidential and it is not attorney-client privileged. So I I'm, I'm not going to let this one go. And I'm going to immediately core request again the invoices from the attorney. And if I don't get them, well, I'll have to go seek further legal action beyond that because I am sick of it. Tanya is darn right here. And really, it's baloney. It's disgusting that you want to keep where the money is going to and where her time is being spent secret.
So what you, clarifying question, what you're asking is you want to break down the, obviously in the warrants section, you can see what the bill was for the month.
Right, the total. And and initially, this has been a three-year battle with me because I was accused of costing this, on public record, accused of costing this town thousands of dollars. And it said in core requests, which is a complete hoo-ha. I was actually paying for my first free hour until a few years ago when this incident came up. And I knew I was illegally being charged, but I paid it because my core requests are between a dollar and $5 on a normal basis if I get, were to be charged. So I did not care. But the bottom line is, is when I core requested, the, it was a board of trustee member, Lindsay Danforth, who was accusing me of costing the town thousands because of the recall, because we filed a lawsuit. So I wanted to see how many thousands, how did she know if I'm costing the town thousands? So I core requested the invoices from the attorney then. And what did I get? I got the total and there's no way for me to even defend myself as not having cost in this town thousands of dollars. Would you continue to allow to be said at public record over and over with ever, out ever disputing? So, and that's part of this hate that's coming at me right now is it's all cumulative over the years. But when you're publicly accused of costing the town thousands of dollars over and over, and then you have no way to rectify it, and just not even in my situation. In general, the town residents deserve to know how much time is being spent on a particular. There's no personal or secret information in how much time, okay? Because the people deserve to know what the town, especially we just keep increasing the town attorney's salary and allowances. I keep seeing that every single time. She just got a pay increase just a few months ago.
The hours, yeah, we've got.
And then, and then when you do a trial, it's she's what considerably higher charge? I think in the 300s per hour versus when she shows up at a town meeting, I think she gets paid 160 or something an hour. So invoices are Freedom of Information Act requestable. They are to be transparent. And there is no reason for this town to be blacking out the amount of time she spends on what? And then it's not secret.
Okay, thank you. Any comment, question?
I I do agree for new positions, job descriptions, it's going to be important.
So there are, so I guess I'd like to offer a point of clarification. So Peter is the administrative support manager. He was moved into that role when he acquired the oversight of the visitor center. He, there has never been an assistant to the town administrator. He was hired as the administrative assistant and then moved into that role. Macy was hired as the deputy town clerk. She took her oath of office as town clerk in April of this year. Prior to that, I did maintain that role. And when it comes to core requests, whoever is going to fill it is the person who has the information. So if core requests are for specifically, say, my emails, it is appropriate for me to be the person to fill that core request.
Okay. All righty. I'll come back to you on that. Anything else before we move on to seven dot three? We're at the possible revenue sources and ballot language.
So I just wanted to see if anyone online, I just have to mute a few call-in users and it would be star six if they want to unmute.
Anybody there? Okay. Now we go on?
Yes.
Okay, seven dot three, make, can you walk us through the aim, Miranda?
Yep, so we're bringing this back to you as the ballot language for the per possible proposed revenue sources. So as the Board of Trustees talked about, there was a desire to start to craft draft ballot language for sales tax, marijuana tax and property tax, special retail marijuana tax, excuse me. So what we have in here is just draft ballot language. But I think the big discussion that we need tonight is what are the figures that you're interested in putting into the taxes? You know, what type of percentage of sales tax are you interested in? Really narrowing in on those financial figures so that we can come back to you with a true draft resolution. Attorney Madsen is unfortunately not here tonight. Just kind of some points of clarification that she offered is taper ballot language is written in a very specific way. There's not a ton of wiggle room. Happy to talk through that, but I would recommend we wait to dissect the language until the attorney Madsen is back on August 30th. And tonight, we narrow the scope of the conversation just to decide what are the financial figures you want to use for each type of tax? And are you still interested in pursuing all three for the November ballot?
I'll throw some thoughts out there. So, um, what I learned from Rita today is that the figures that we have for our sales tax are actually 11% greater than what what's in the the document because they're from a previous year.
Actually, what it is, no. So as the July financials, what it is is sales tax is 12% above what we have budgeted.
Okay.
That's what it is. And we're about equal to where we were at last year, comparable to last year.
Oh, okay, great. So, so my my thought is that we, we, we allocate any sales tax revenue or any tax revenue to the the police department. And and that will free funds for other departments. So, and I think it would be something that that voters would be interested in where. Because where we are right now. And it would be simple just to separate the department. And if for some reason we needed to turn over policing to Boulder County Sheriff's Office, then that that money would then go to the, still to policing, but to the sheriff's office instead of the local town. Let's see what else. So I, I, I talked to Igotti. I thought that we just have the four different marijuana dispensaries, so I could go chat with each one. And the, I did talk to the employees and assistant manager. And the feedback I got was there's already paying 20% tax. And and we need to think about medical marijuana. I don't think that the tax would apply to medical marijuana. And I'm planning to talk to the owners of the four businesses because I think that's probably where we want to get our, some information on how that would affect their business if we increased the marijuana tax. And then as far as the amount that we'd be looking for, I, I'm thinking like around 500,000. And I would propose a 1% sales tax to keep it simple. And that would, I believe that tax would apply to marijuana dispensaries, but I'd have to double check that.
Question, the, do we, in terms of ballot language, it looks like what we've done so far has a dollar amount as opposed to a percentage. Does it have to have a dollar amount?
So I think it's going to depend on which one you're talking about. So there is a, there is a financial figure in every ballot language because you need to let the voters know how much you you intend to receive from that sales tax increase. But again, I wouldn't focus on the those financial figures right now because the amount is going to very much depend on what are you asking for? Are you going to the voters with 2% sales tax, 1%, .5, .25? So I wouldn't get too narrowed in on.
Right, because essentially, if you understate, you're going to have to pay it back.
Right.
Correct.
And also she did put in the sales tax four to 5%. So she did put in here 1%. So that's your 600,000 would be.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I think you want.
Put in 1%.
You just put in a number. So what we need you to pick the number tonight.
Oh, I did have a couple, some other thoughts. So, um, to kind of ease the pain of, you know, maybe there are some things that we could do to ease the pain of a sales tax increase. A lot of local establishments give discounts to locals. So that would help a little bit for people who are living in town, making purchases. Maybe we can help businesses with marketing and publicity. Maybe some kind of small local business grants for those businesses that are concerned about losing revenue because of the increased sales tax.
Okay, Eric?
I mean, I'm interested in 1% on the sales tax. I'm interested in 5% on retail marijuana. And.
That's pretty steep, the 5%.
Well, we could levy.
Okay.
I'm looking at five and also looking at surrounding towns who are all hovering around that 5% mark.
Okay, right.
You know, it seems to make sense. Why, why would Netherlands, why should Netherlands collect less off of that particular business than every other municipality or county around us? Like, that doesn't seem right.
So, so the business owners might feel that they lose some customers.
Sure, they might feel that, but I don't, I don't think that that would be accurate. I'm not really sure how that could be accurate, considering that those sales taxes are paid in every other municipality. So if if people are, if if Netherlands is a destination for for marijuana, if that is in fact the case, then someone might not drive up the canyon. But I highly doubt that it, that that 5% is worth the gas and wear and tear on your vehicle to do so. Like, I just don't think that this makes any sense, right? Logically, we should be collecting this 5% to me.
It's 3% in Longmont, so like they're going to drive down Longmont to save 2%? No way.
Right. That is my feeling on that anyway.
Tony, what do you think about 5%?
I think that's totally fair. I mean, I mean, the only people arguing against this are the four dispensary owners who are worried it's going to hurt their sales. I don't think it's going to hurt their sales. They take offense and I call it a luxury item. I think it is a luxury item. If you have a medical condition, you can get a red card and there's no sales tax, okay? So if for people who actually need marijuana for all the great things it's good for, it, they're covered. For recreational users who are coming up to Ned and want to buy some weed, they're not going to drive to Longmont to save 2%. It's more down the hill, there's 8%, 10%, you know, like 5% is so fair. I don't think anybody cares that they're already paying so much. And the honest truth is marijuana is so much cheaper than it used to be. It's a deal. And I'm, people think that's weird that I say that as well, but it is. And and I just feel like, you know, all the other taxes don't really go to us except for sales tax. We get that 4% and maybe we'll end up getting 5% of that. But there's like the, all those other taxes, they say, we already pay all these taxes. Like, well, the state gets all that money and they do what they do with it, but that doesn't help Ned per se. Like, I mean, maybe it does, you know, secondhandly through whatever projects they use that money for. But, yeah, so 5% to me is a no-brainer. And then I would say, gosh, 0.8 maybe percent for sales tax? I don't know. Are we thinking about the property tax too or not even bother with that? If we're not going to do property tax, then maybe 1% sales tax.
Is, I think 5%, 5% looks like it yields an extra $116,000. That's significant. And I, I don't think, board, do we have any? Karen, what do you think about that? Do you have concerns?
Mo, we did, we did have someone asked that we go reach out to the marijuana dispensaries. So I'm, I'm going to do that. And if 5% is the target, I can get their feedback on that.
I think it's good.
Yeah, they're not going to like it, I'll tell you that. They're going to moan about it. But I don't think it's going to make that big of a difference, just like nobody wants our sales tax to go up either. Barbara Hart doesn't want it. But we had, the money's got to come from somewhere, you know? And I mean, I don't know, I don't want taxes to go up either. I would rather taxes go down.
Just want to see them, ask them if they want 20% or 5%.
I mean, it would.
You're already at 20%, so it would be 25%.
It is worth just stating, because this, you know, for for everyone who's who's here, that, you know, generally, these sorts of, like, sales taxes are regressive tax. All sales taxes are regressive taxes, right? Sin taxes, like marijuana, cigarettes, alcohol, things like that, are doubly so. They're doubly regressive as they have proven time and time again, study after study, analysis after analysis, to be a higher burden on the poor than on the wealthy, right? And so by raising taxes in this way, it is going to be more burdensome for folks who have less money. I'm much less concerned, honestly, about marijuana retailers and their business than I am about the people who might patronize that business, right? And who might, who might suffer. So.
It is very easy to get a medical marijuana, though, and not get any taxes.
Absolutely, for someone with a medical condition, for sure. But but, you know, people who are, people who are, who are poor also deserve to have some luxury items, right? They deserve to have some fun as well. So like tax taxing them and affecting them too much is a thing. I just want to put that out there, right? But we need to offer the services that the town claims to offer, right? And the town Netherlands services are basic as it is. I'm not sure we're trying to do too much. In fact, I think we're trying to do just what's right for a, for a local government to do. So this is our mechanism. It's unfortunate that it has to be this way, but this is our mechanism for making sure that we offer the services we need to offer.
Aggressive is a reality.
Yeah.
The question, Miranda, Igotti just substantially expanded their size.
Yes.
And part of it is going to be many. And part of it is going to be manufacturing. We're just taxing the retail side, yes?
Correct, yeah. Anything that's wholesale, it's like the Flower Collective, none of their activities are taxable.
Okay.
And same with Igotti's product manufacturing.
There are nine other communities, as I understand. I presume they're all, all of them are paying or are collecting 5% or better.
Yes.
But it's, uh, it's not earth shaking, the amount of money, but it's significant. $116,000 is a good thing to collect. And it's, from our standpoint, relatively painless, but Karen.
Oh, um, what's, what's the cost, Miranda, to collect the marijuana tax to the town? Do you have any sense of that, since we'll have, we'll be doing that instead of the county or state? That's my understanding.
So I would, my assumption would be that, that still the, the, the state would collect it for us. No, you're thinking that comes to us?
That's not what.
Oh, what you put in here?
Yeah, the town would need to bear, so.
Oh, yeah.
Says, will not. So that would be another additional. Yeah.
So that would be great if you could bring that, those numbers to us for our next meeting.
Of what it would cost as town staff?
To collect.
To collect.
Like, how much time is that? I mean, I guess, I mean, it would be rolled into.
Right.
Finance or Macy's job.
So, so I wonder if, if, um, like another town could tell us, give us a sense of how much time it would be.
Sure.
Or, or you could look at the process.
Macy, could you reach out to the clerk's list serve and ask anyone who collects this tax, how they go about doing so?
That's good to know.
Yeah.
It's not going to be free money.
Right, I guess, yeah. And I, thanks for pointing that out. I mean, I guess it would be like occupational tax with Macy collects. I mean, that's a part of her responsibilities and I would assume this would fall within that same realm.
Which brings up occupation tax.
Which I don't think you did. You didn't add it to your list here. So I think we were just narrowing and now, and I don't think we heard whether you're interested in property tax and if so, how much? And how you felt about the one. It seems like maybe there's, we'll start with 5%. We still have more meetings to talk about this, but only, right now, only two more.
On property tax, um, we're just talking about the mill levy. Uh, it tax, our collections are going to go up because assessments are going up, right? And do we have a pretty good beat on what we think assessed value on property is going to go up?
The maximum it can go up instantly.
Okay.
Yeah, per, per year.
And so the Boulder County assessor has to stay within those bounds.
So we're supposed to be getting the draft or the preliminary figures here by the end of August?
Okay, then, then I think we're going to need that. Because philosophically, I don't have an issue with, with the change in the mill levy, but we really need to know what we're dealing with or what's, what's ambient noise in terms of what we're going to get out of our retail.
Right, and as Attorney Mattson stated, it's also going to change, the assessment rate will change from, from 7.15 down to 6.95. So it'll be interesting to see what the assessed value will be, right?
Yeah.
How much is it going up? And you take that times, you know, um, in other words, are we going to lose property tax revenue or is it going to increase?
Yeah.
I mean.
Question.
That's, that's going to be the unknown for now.
But, yeah, can you, as soon as you get that data, can you let me know even before we meet? I'd like to know that.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
So the, um, sale, the property tax will have, will impact, um, local, um, will impact residents. Whereas the sales tax is residents, is whoever's purchasing the product. So both are visitors and residents. So, um, you know, talking to people, I, I get the sense that they prefer the, the sales tax over the property tax. Because we're sharing the burden between, um, visitors and residents, maybe more so on the visitors who have a big impact on our roads and police department, et cetera.
On, uh, uh, property tax, uh, we, in the homework we did last time, what, how much were we talking about ballpark?
Well, what was it? Five mills is $177,000?
Yeah, okay, so.
And the, uh, fire department is going for three mills?
That's what they've discussed. I don't know if they've talked.
Sure. But, I mean, if we're looking in those sorts of figures, right? We're looking in that range. You know, five mills, you know, it, it's something that might not pass and it, it's not as much money as one would hope it would be, I think, you know, for the, for the kind of political, uh.
The heat.
Capital that it will take to pass.
Yeah, essentially, your, your total revenue impact, you're in the same range as the marijuana tax we just talked about.
And what I'd really like to not do, though, is lose money because of the changing assess, assessment rate. I mean.
Yeah.
We might be in a situation where we have to bump it up a few mills just to maintain.
Yeah.
Well, but the home prices have gone up.
Right, so, but we don't know how that's going to, yeah, balance out.
The fire department is voting, the board is voting on the mill levy, um, ballot issue, property tax this month.
Yeah.
At their meeting.
Which is tomorrow. Yeah.
Okay.
Good to know.
I guess our homework assignment is to get, to get where they end up and then get what the, what the limit is going to be on.
Yeah.
On, on how much the assessment can go up. Because we really need, no dollars, uh, dollars and cents what we're talking about.
Get all this in time, though, for, I mean, we, it happened in the past that we didn't get it by the end of August.
Well, they promised, but we'll see.
Right. Yeah.
I guess the question is for the September 6th.
You have to adopt something on September 6th. That's the hard deadline.
That's, that's the vision we're going to have at that point in time and we'll either have that data or we won't have that data.
Agreed.
Well, I, I think if the, my personal opinion is if the fire department's asking for it, we really shouldn't step on their toes, um, as they work, they are part of our team, you know?
I don't know that it's mutually exclusive, though.
I know, but like, what are the odds of people voting yes and yes on two different property tax increases? So my personal thing, even though I do think that it's okay to tax property owners, you know, because we are the ones that are actually using the roads and the things that make our town and we are the ones that benefit the most from all of this.
Yeah.
I think we should maybe personally hold off because I don't want to have two property tax increases on one ballot. That's my person, personal thought. And I, I am a little concerned because property taxes, well, property taxes are always like a little bit behind, so they are going up, but I think they're going to start going down again. That's, and so then we'll worry about that in a couple of years, I guess, but.
Karen, you were shaking your head. What do you have to say?
Yeah, I'd be in favor of just pursuing the two sales tax and not, not the property tax.
The sales tax and the marijuana tax?
Yeah, and there will be three, um, Boulder County sales tax measures on the November ballot. One is a continuation of the .1% transportation tax. There's a .1% um, emergency services tax, which will provide a couple benefits to, um, the mountainous areas. They're looking at, um, using it to fund rescue services and an ambulance up here. And then the third one is, um, a more of a fire mitigation.
Yeah.
And that's .1 as well.
Is that, uh, that third one going to be discussed in public sometime soon?
I haven't, I, I can, you, you can find some information on Boulder County website. So that's .3 right there.
Point three, okay.
A, a .2 increase and a .1 continuation.
Yeah.
And these ones historically do have a, when the county does, it has a history of passing. These been.
I think the all three pass.
Okay.
Yeah.
All righty.
Because of where we are right now with the recent, um, fires down in the plains.
Okay. Okay, so what are we agreeing to tonight? That, uh, number one, we, we need some, number one, that we've got a hard date, this is not going to change. It's coming up pretty soon. We seem to have a, a sense of the board that marijuana tax would be a go, uh, sales tax would be a go, and we need more data on real estate.
Can we operate off of the 5% marijuana, 1% sales tax for the sake of continuing to really draft language and get you actual figures?
I think, I, Tanya, you need to speak up, but I think I'm seeing heads nodding here.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Um, then, does that give you what you need, Miranda?
Yes, we'll bring it back on the 30th.
Okay.
And then you will ask you to really start diving into the actual language itself. I guess one more thing is that interest in tying this solely to the police department versus supplemental language of, and other municipal services. Where does the board lie on that?
I think, this is Tanya, we need to have the and other, just, I mean, just in case, but, but I can go either way. I can be convinced of the other.
Yeah, we heard pretty strong advice to tie it to something if you want it to approve, but essentially we've been, we haven't really communicated yet what we're doing with the police department. And, and I hate to put a cart before the horse.
Oh, well, um, we need, um, uh, police services up here.
Yeah.
Of some sort. And, um.
Much more expensive.
Yeah. And it's a lot more expensive than, than it used to be. And, um, we're, you know, working towards rebuilding the local department. And there is the idea of community policing and, um, I, I think we can make a strong case for it. I'm not doing it right now, but, but I was a while ago.
Would you tie it to both, both taxes? Would you make it specific to the PD?
Well, that's a good question because I was just thinking of one tax rather than two, the sales tax.
Okay.
Because the sales tax would hit both the, would be for all businesses.
Okay, and the sales tax would, again, each one of these, we're talking about roughly a buck, two, a buck, you know, 100, 1.25 million or so for each one, right? Uh, in terms of impact, what we could collect?
500,000 for 1% sales tax.
500,000.
And for the marijuana, 5%? What is that?
It yields 116, I think.
Yeah. So we're talking $616,000 in increased revenue.
So if there's.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, if there's, if, if you want, what we can do is just leave in the way it's written now, which is talking about municipal services, police officers to ensure public safety, personnel for emergency services, we'll just leave the language as is. And then that's what you can debate next.
Right, exactly. I mean, I, I quite like this language.
Go ahead.
I, I say, I quite like the language that's, that's in there. And I don't think that the retail marijuana sales tax has to have much explanation.
I agree.
You know, that one is sort of like, well, duh.
Yeah.
We need to do this, um, you know?
Do we agree, do others in the room or on the board agree with that? I do.
Yeah, this is Tanya.
Yeah, I'm fine with pursuing those two and we can work out the language and the message and.
But I think we're getting close. I, I would tie the sales tax specifically to exactly the language that's in here, it's public safety. I think it's, uh, it, that's a, a major chunk of our entire budget anyway.
Yeah, and it's why we're doing this.
Yeah.
So it's completely accurate.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not a bait and switch.
Yeah.
Okay. Miranda, you got what you need?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, are we, okay, this is a discussion item, do we need, need public input tonight?
Sure do.
Okay, who's, who's in line?
I don't have anyone whose way is to their hand.
It would be great to have some. Just saying.
I'm just saying. Who's out there? Okay.
Going without.
Anybody in the audience? Okay.
Nope, these two ladies are good to go.
Okay. All righty. Do we have what we need then to move on?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Staff reports.
Uh, they're in the packet. I think one, the one thing, and I'll, I'll turn it to Rita and Macy if they have anything to highlight and Dawn online. I just want to speak about the Public Works Department. First, they're my staff accolade. I just, I'm, I'm incredibly appreciative of the Utilities Department. And so if you all recall, last month, my appreciation was for Chris Caligaris, who was the only employee working in Utilities, working every day. It was incredible. He went out on a personal leave. Three weeks later, we had five staff members, excuse me, four staff members while he was still out. We had two part timers, two full timers. And this is in addition to the four personnel that Dave has on staff who support our team. So we went from nothing to nine in a matter of three weeks. And I think that that's an incredible turnaround and I really want to highlight not only the personnel who joined us, we're really appreciative of having Brittany and Andrew and Jimmy and Tim in addition to Chris, but also Christie, who played a large role in onboarding them quickly and moving at the speed I was moving. The goal was to get them in the door and, and she did just that. And so I just think that there's a lot of celebration and perhaps not a full recognition of how quickly we went from a pretty crisis situation to a relatively full bounce back. So as of today, we have the nine. Jimmy has faded out a bit. His time was really just kind of that stopgap, but he is still there to support the team. But Chris is now back. He's in with Andrew and Brittany. They're working side by side with Dave's team. Um, and then in addition, I don't have in here, but J-Rom, who is a part of our streets team, was a former Utilities employment. He was really big. I learned about this term today, streetilities, which was this term that was created when J-Rom was like streets and utilities. And today, streetilities went out and did a service on a sewer line. It was a full team effort. J-Rom got his CDL. He's now our second CDL. So while Utilities is not fully staffed in the sense of we're missing the Utilities Manager, Utilities Billing Support Specialist, what happened there is incredible. And that also comes in tied with the Parks Department being fully staffed to their budget of four, and the Streets Department is officially fully staffed with three, which is their budget. And so these departments are in great condition and they're, of course, can do better and we're going to continue to grow and, and tackle these projects. But just from a personnel standpoint, really want to highlight how incredible it is what's happening in that Public Works Department.
And, uh, uh, really appreciate the, the folks that put us, that hit the graffiti person right at the right time.
Yes, we did have the Parks Department who caught someone graffitiing right in the act of graffitiing and they were able to stop the person.
Purple handed.
Yeah, stopped them while they did bring in Boulder County Sheriff's Office, ultimately agreed to just do a warning. The person was having a rough go and was irritated. It was not the person who was graffitiing other parts of Chapita. This is a one-time incident, but they were, yeah, happened to be in the right place, right time. So really excited for everything that's happening in the Utilities Department.
Yeah. Well, I think those are two really good developments. I mean, that's, you could spread that over two months, staff report, and it'd be great.
I'll just keep reiterating, um, but.
Now do it for the PD.
Okay, exactly. That's our next, that's our next move. And so I do think, I think, I guess I'm just hoping to offer that reassurance that there is that commitment amongst the team, that recruitment team recognizes when we really have to buckle down and get the people in the door. So, um, would love to turn it over to, to Rita, Macy, Dawn, if you have anything to add to your staff reports?
You know, you just reminded me of something I would like to add.
You know, you just reminded me of something I would like to add. Um, so in my staff report, we did receive the second, um, ARPA fund payments of hundred ninety-two thousand, which reminded me, we did not talk about the 2022 supplemental budget. I have a hundred and sixty-seven going in and out in my supplemental budget. And what that's about is we received our first payment last year of a hundred ninety-two thousand. And while we were going through, uh, budget season 2022, we didn't know at the time how much of that were we gonna use in 2021. So of the hundred ninety-two, we used approximately thirty thousand in 2021. Therefore, the balance forward is a hundred and sixty-seven. So that's why I'm recommending, um, let's put it in the supplemental budget as an in and an out, just so we have the ability to spend it if we need to this year.
That's prudent.
That's pretty, I mean, it's off-explanatory, but I did, we did not talk about that earlier.
What's the deadline to have it spent?
The ARPA funds spent, I believe, until 2024, but there are some circumstances where you can have until 2026.
Okay, so it's not.
Plenty of time.
It's got time, right.
So, yeah, I mean, the second payment, I guess, we kinda discussed is we're not gonna rush with that.
And what are appropriate uses?
What are, that, what we have left to.
There's a whole list of things.
Is about seventy thousand, I think, and it's all gonna be for grit removal, right?
That's the, the first tranche, yeah, that we have left. So the first tranche is all dedicated. Your second tranche, you have, I, we recommended that you talk about it during your budget because it can be for infrastructure, essential premium pay for essential workers, um, anything related to the impacts of COVID, Health and Human Services. Um, but we are limited to certain categories, and I don't know all of them off the top of my head. But because we didn't lose revenue, we can't use it for anything and everything like other municipalities.
Fair enough. It's not so nice to discuss.
Yeah.
Okay.
One more time, one last thing is every fund is doing better than projected. I mean, even still out of July, so that's reassuring.
All right.
Actually, we don't have Dawn on, I don't believe, but Macy, anything you want to highlight?
I am here, actually. Miranda, I just, my computer was overheating.
Ah, yes, something we were doing, we're working on. Dawn's gonna get a new computer. Dawn, do you have anything you wanna highlight from your report?
Um, um, you know, there was something that I just found out, some new information, and I can't, today, and I can't, and I was like, oh, shoot, I wish I would've known that to put it in my staff report. Can't for the life of me remember what it was. And I just do wanna tell you that, um, working full on on the grease trap, we had a hot water, uh, tank fail today, and I am gonna have to replace the computer. So I would just like to make the board aware of, these are kind of some of the daily challenges we're up against as staff. Um, the unexpected, and, you know, it happens in every single department every day. So I just wanna highlight that we do our best. We try to put the good face forward when we give you our staff reports, but there are some challenges every day. Every time you turn around, it feels like we're bleeding money. So, and really not our fault. It, it's just how, what we do in our jobs to keep things running. So I would just ask the board to keep those, keep that in mind as you're making your decisions going forward. That's all. Thank you.
We will, Dawn, and did you remember now what you wanna say?
Uh, no, I, well, I can't for the life of me remember it, so you'll get it next month's staff report.
What do you do remember?
It's fair.
Um, no, I don't have anything to add to the report that's already in the packet.
I think the only thing I would say is your election is next week. I'll just jump in on you. Your election is next week. It's happening. Election Day is Tuesday, August twenty-third. Everyone should be in possession of their ballots. If for some reason they are not, they should contact Town Hall to get a replacement or to verify that they're registered. Ballots can be accepted here at the Community Center in the ballot box that's located outside, or Town Hall Monday through Friday, nine to five, or via mail. We must be in possession, though, of your ballot by seven PM on Tuesday for it to be counted.
And, uh, we don't open the box here until the end?
No, it's here. It's already open.
Okay, and then how are we doing count-wise?
So we don't actually count that box until day of. So unfortunately, we can't give you numbers because what's at Town Hall is not gonna be a realistic count. Um, so we do that. Just for the safety of the ballots, we prefer to keep them in the ballot box here um, versus having numerous boxes at Town Hall.
That's smart. Okay.
Macy, I was amazed at all the core requests that you processed. This looks like a record number.
Um, I'm not sure if it's a record number. We do receive quite a bit of them, but there was a lot that came through last month in particular. Yes.
Fourteen core requests over thirty days.
It's not, is it a, it's not a revenue item exactly, but it's a lot of work.
No, actually, most of the core requests can be completed in the first hour, and so there was one core request where we did a deposit of forty-five dollars because it was gonna take an extra ninety minutes, um, and that person paid, so we could finish that out. Um, but most of these requests can be done in an hour. And as I said earlier, it's good, they're all gonna be filled by whoever the most appropriate personnel is to fill them.
Okay. Um, if, uh, Marshall Fine Lovin isn't here, is there anything, uh, that we need to talk about in her report?
Um, not that I'm aware of, that, that she wanted to necessarily highlight. I think she is, um, working, there's a two-week jury trial next week, but she has tried to adjust her schedule so that her time there is very, uh, squeezed together and limited ideally. Um, but Boulder County will, of course, support us. Uh, she does still have, Boulder County is supporting through the remainder of August and has started to sign up for September coverage. Um, so I think that that's, I mean, they're, they're definitely full steam ahead. They are seeing quite a few calls, though, um, that are serious felonies.
Yeah.
Um, and then definitely an increase in mental health calls. Uh, so those are between Marshall Fine Lovin and the Boulder County Sheriff's Office. It seems to be a, a large chunk of what they are working on.
Yep, it's been, uh, way too busy August. Um, okay, then, let's see, there's, uh, eight dot four. It's called Final Strategic Plan. What's that?
That is the strategic plan that, uh, Marshall Fine Lovin has developed when she took over as Marshall and had reviewed with her team at the time. It was meant for them and to identify the goals that she had for the next five years.
Yep, okay, yep, I saw that in the packet. Uh, is Nikki's, uh, Public Works, uh, Staff Report largely complete? Did we, we covered it in other?
Yeah, you covered it. There's some really great pictures in there, but if you haven't had a chance to go down and look at the musical instruments at GOCO, or the Goccio, GOCO, they're really fun. Um, that is, we weren't able to do the nest, if those of you who recall, when we went for the grant, we were aiming for a nest, but it became financially challenging with the artists, just unexpected costs that we weren't anticipating. Um, so switched gears to these musical instruments, and the next day, there was a whole group of Wild Bear, uh, kids out there playing the instruments, and that was pretty incredible to see. Still some things we have to do down there. Still more work is the first ad.
Yeah, there's a real, uh, nice synergy there, too, with the, the history of music in Netherlands and Jim Goccio and like all of that with, with the musical instruments. It all kind of makes sense.
We did get our interpretive signage in, so those will go up, and we're getting, we're getting close, but it is possible we're gonna seek an extension for the GOCO. We were given an opportunity to extend one more time into next summer. Um, just ran into some, some hiccups, and a lot of that is, uh, receiving everything we need. At this point, it's the trees and a delay.
Right.
Um, so GOCO's been great to us, and, and we're open to allowing us potentially an extension up until September twenty twenty-three. Right now, we're supposed to end in March.
I mean, March is not a very logical time to end building a park in the mountains, so September makes a lot more sense anyway.
Yes, our, you know, our time to work on it is, is limited, but I know the current thing, the big thing they're working on is hooking up the, the drip system, the irrigation system for the plants that are set to come. But the benches are out, um, so we do encourage you to go over there. There's always something happening.
That's great. Uh, Erica, are you on the line?
I am. Thanks. Um, I just had a couple of things to add to my staff report. Um, it's already in there, but, you know, if you, if anyone's interested in participating in some of the campaigns we have coming up, um, it is, it is very much appreciated. The US Solar Subscription Campaign will be officially launching September seventh, I believe, after the Labor Day weekend. And, um, we're also kinda gonna do a soft launch at Wild Bear this weekend, and then also at the Peak to Peak Services Fair on the twenty-fifth. Um, we've got a eco-cycle tour coming up on the twenty-fifth for any town staff and, you know, anyone really that's interested in joining for that. Um, please get in touch with me if you're interested, and I'll share the details. Um, and I also wanted to just mention the, the PACE visits that I've been doing with Matt Hannan from the county. So that's the Partners for a Clean Environment. I'm sure most of you have met him at various meetings. We just did another round of assessments yesterday in town, and for those of you that are not familiar with that program, basically, it's, it's a free service to businesses in Boulder County, and we just basically try to help save energy and water, which we know that's a huge cost savings for our businesses. So if anyone on this call or anyone knows of a business owner that's interested in having an assessment, we're gonna be trying to do a, a monthly assessment up here, so probably middle September and then October, and then November as well, when things start to really slow down. So please get in touch if you want us to stop by, and, um, again, he's got like some aerators for faucets to reduce flow. He's got some great kind of spray hoses for, you know, restaurants that wanna spray down, uh, dishes before they go into the dishwasher. There's just a lot of like free things that, um, Matt can do directly or get you in touch with Excel for, let's say, a plug-and-play LED fluorescent bulb replacement program, for example, which, um, is, you have to be a certain size business, but it does cover most of the businesses in Netherland. So if you guys have questions about that, please reach out. Um, but again, if you are interested in participating, we would love to have you join any of the campaigns happening right now. Thanks.
When is the EV day?
They, um, the EV, there's two. So we are gonna have a Rivian at Wild Bear this weekend.
Yep.
And that's gonna be really neat to check out the, the vehicle there. And then we will have a much larger EV day on September eleventh at the Farmer's Market. And we're hoping to have five electric vehicles with the support of the Drive Clean Colorado Organization. We'll have two, Tom's, you've been very generous, um, Trustee Tom in bringing your leaf to that event. We'll also have the Rivian again. Three other vehicles hopefully from this, um, Drive Clean Colorado group, and then also an e-bike for folks to check out, ask questions. There'll be some experts from the state to talk about, uh, tax incentives, and then also some charging station questions as well.
Okay, excellent. That's great. Um, and then we have that lovely distribution transformer and, um, right near Town Hall. What's our plan to get chargers in there?
So the chargers are just delayed. Unfortunately, it's a part of our, a long tips delay. Um, we are supposed to receive them hopefully in the next few months. We've been hearing that for a while. Um, but they are ordered. We just need to get them, and we're ready to install them as soon as we get them.
They're level three chargers, right? And how many do we buy?
Two.
That's great. That's great.
And there are opportunities, um, to pursue more, but that's what we're.
Yeah.
Slotted for, for this grant.
Okay, excellent. Um, Erica, anything else to report tonight? Compost? Hey, I guess we're done?
Well, there's a lot happening with compost, so, um, it would probably be good to touch base about that, uh, once we have a little bit more of an understanding of what the new requirements from A1 Organics are going to mean for Netherland. Um, that's a new change. They are having kind of higher standards for compost headed to their facility down in the flats. And so, um, they're gonna actually start charging fees for compost that has any kind of contaminants. And I just don't know much about that since it's pretty new. Um, I do know that there's, uh, MOU that has been signed or is soon to be signed with the Boulder Valley School District, both the elementary and the middle high school, is my understanding, so that they can compost at the Netherland Transfer Station. We're still trying to figure out an in-vessel facility that is best paired for the transfer station, but that's, that's really, uh, a goal of the county is to, is to get some type of facility where we can create our own compost, keep it up here, and then also use the benefits of that, that in-vessel for really high-quality compost for residents to use. Do you have any other questions about that?
That's good.
From the board? Okay. Thank you.
Are we, uh, finished with staff reports, section eight?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. Let, section nine, uh, trustee reports. Um, I, all I can say is I, I'm, I'm, had enough meetings. You may feel that way. Uh, we've been working a lot on police department issues, and now, uh, we've got our map, uh, for watershed. So I, I think that we're getting close to having an ordinance to put together there. There, um, I, I really enjoyed, uh, sitting at the front desk. If you ever have some time, try it, especially, uh, is Peter back soon?
Peter is back tomorrow.
Okay, that's great. It's been fun.
It has been fun. It was a group activity. I did the last four days, which is always an adventure, so.
You could tell when Miranda's at the front desk is the door is wide open.
I love when the doors open. It's, although everything got soaking wet when it rained.
Yeah, yeah, it, yeah, it did rain, but, uh, that was all fun. I'm looking forward to having some of our most recent challenges behind us and getting back to more proactive things. Uh, Trustee Blakemore.
So the multimodal transportation plan, um, study made the cut for the Boulder County Subregional Share of Projects, and I expect that we'll get final approval from Dr. Cog. A lot of people helped with this and supported the project. Um, DOT approved matching funds, NDA, DDA did. Boulder County Community Planning and Permitting was very helpful. Um, a couple folks from Dr. Cog. Lindsay Danforth helped me with the GIS. Christopher Kelly did editing of the application. I received letters of recommendation from Dennis Waylon, Carol Rowe, Stephen D. Tebow, Stephen LaFaire, Kate Massengill, Erica Thorley, thank you. Elektra Gear, Jill Reeves, Kayla Evans, and Brent Tragaski, uh, thank you. Miranda and Tom for their moral support. Um, and then I received, uh, public comments in favor of the application from Matt Muir, Cycles for Community, Andrew Bliss, Kurt Abendroth, and Evan. Um, so the project schedule's been pushed out six months to accommodate an IGA that we need to do with CDOT for administration of the funding. Dr. Cog recommended strongly that we increase the budget from one twenty-five K to two hundred K without any increasing, um, matching funds, which is very nice.
How about three?
Three, three, three?
Three hundred.
Three hundred, yeah. Um, so I looked into this, uh, grant for Reconnecting Communities program. Uh, my idea was to use it to, um, plan the first street corridor, transportation, street sidewalks, public spaces, and creek path. However, I, uh, just to, due to, um, the capacity that we have to be doing things in our town, I think one transportation planning, um, activity is enough for the time being. This, uh, Reconnecting Communities program will be available for many years, and we can use it for capital improvements. Um, things such as the, uh, revitalization of the First Street Corridor, um, pedestrian paths across the highway from like the community center to the neighborhoods just north of it, which a lot of people cross that, that road.
Indeed.
And it's a little unsafe with the winding streets, so we could, um, uh, do maybe a bridge over it or, you know, lots of things, so, um, any.
What's the typical award for that program?
Uh, uh, the planning grants are a maximum of two, two million. Um, the, uh, capital grants are a minimum of five million. And we, we would qualify for special assistance as a rural community, and a rural community is defined as, um, outside of an urban area with a population of less than fifty thousand dollars. And they really encourage collaborative applications where you have multiple agencies and organizations coming together to do a project. Um, matching funds for the, the grants can come from a lot of different sources. Private, if the transportation facility that is creating the barrier to connecting the community is owned by a private or nonprofit state in kind, some federal funds can be used.
Excellent.
So, um, and I'm partnering with Erica Thorley on, um, two e-bike programs coming up, a rebate, um, and a lease to own for low-income residents, and the lease part of it would be using the bike as opposed to, um, paying for it and have to use it for a couple of years, then you, you get the bike.
Who funds those?
Um, the, uh, SB one ninety-three is the rebate and the lease to own Colorado Energy Office. Um, they haven't been announced yet, but stay tuned. Um, ask Erica.
Okay, that's excellent. Thank you, Erica. That's great. Thanks, Karen.
Yeah, nice job, Karen. I, I do, I wonder about us being rural. We're often considered to be an urban area.
Well.
Not outside an urban area.
Well, for the purpose of the grant.
We, we would.
We would qualify, and so we receive extra assistance.
I hope so.
Yeah.
I'm always suspicious of that, whether we do qualify. Cool.
Unless we annex ourselves all the way down to Boulder.
Yeah.
That's a longer discussion.
Indeed.
Uh, good, then, uh, Trustee Kums Ismail, it's your turn.
Uh, just, I guess, a few, not really many pros have updates, but there's some, uh, a, a few that I know of because I've been out of town. But, uh, Trails Master Planning is ongoing, and so that, coupled with the work that you're doing, Trustee Blakemore is gonna be really useful. That particular crossing has been brought up many times, uh, so that's something that we definitely wanna be working on. There was a community noxious weed poll on July thirty-first. Trustee Blakemore was there. It was great. We loaded up dozens of bags of noxious weeds into the back of town pickup trucks and, uh, got a, got a lot of area covered in Chapita Park, Fisherman's Lot, and kind of the surrounding areas down by the shoreline. So that was pretty effective, and it was nice to see. I don't know how many, how many people officially were out on that, but I think it was over twelve. So I think we had maybe thirteen or fourteen people out there pulling weeds, which was nice to see. Well, you know.
Yeah, you're doing your best.
You do your best. Those, uh, oxide daisies come out pretty easy. Uh, so, you know, if you, if you see them.
Yeah.
Pull them.
I got, I, I, I don't know who's done more bags, Town or myself. I'm at fifty-five.
Nice. What else did we do? Oh, I thought I had another thing. Working on that adopted bench program, especially with the new benches coming in. It seems like it makes sense for us to have a program that every other municipality in our general area has, uh, which is a way of, you know, dedicating uh, some money to the, to the town in memory of. Some money to the, to the town in memory of a loved one who, who cared about this place or. Who, who, who might have valued that kind of contribution, so we're working on putting together. Kind of the last final touches on the proposal that we'll have for the BOT on Adopt a Bench.
The what, there was no connection with the bench that went in at the historical museum, was there?
I don't think that.
Daughters of the American Revolution donated that bench to the Gillespie House.
Okay, that was.
Yeah, different thing.
And that's in the Netherland Area Historical Society.
Right.
Item.
Okay, let's bring them on there.
Yeah, but this would formalize the way that you adopt a bench, formalize the cost for it, formalize the way that you get a sign for it, so they're not kind of. Signs that actually stop you from sitting on the bench, which is kind of an issue, right? So we just wanted to make sure that that's something easy to do, accessible to do, and that there are mechanisms for people to make those kinds of dedications. Because those requests do come in and right now they're dealt with in a kind of ad hoc manner.
Okay, great.
I have a, a question for Eric. What's up with the annexation regulations?
Well, that I wanted to bring up in other business.
Okay.
Okay, great. Trustee Corvallin.
Sorry about that. Uh, not much, the DDA meeting was. Pretty good, we. Oh, let's see, we approved a supplemental budget to investigate the area in front of Gercio Field, if it would be viable for a. Formant space. Worries, worried about water table issues. Talked about having. Extra members or. It's kind of like on-call members. If we don't have forum. And that was tabled, also talking about investing money into bond programs. Also tabled. Going over the budget, making sure we have enough money so that we don't have to come back for supplemental and make sure that the administrator gets paid for her work. Some of those. Projects would be the ones that we know of, the Big Springs Project and the. Wayfinding, which. We also discussed that project, which is still, I think going to phase two. With the same company. That they've been using. To get it ready to make the signs. So hopefully that gets wrapped up, you know, well, it won't get wrapped up. Too quickly, talking about the restoration of the bridge, covered bridge, which. I think the DDA is going to take that on, even though there was some debate about it, should it be a town? Town should help with that, you know, just how we were saying, DDA should be helping with stuff, it's often the conversation is. Some of these things are obviously town property and responsibilities, but. Being not in their budget, your budget, our budget, they sometimes take things on as well. Public arts project, it's like it's about done, so that was a super success. That's about all I can recall, I'm sure I forgot something, but so.
Dinosaurs are great, people love them.
Yeah, who doesn't, right?
I thought we learned that they had feathers though.
How did we learn that, I thought they had scales.
They didn't paint any feathers on.
Well, you could do that.
I don't know if she wants anybody doing it.
Okay, we're complete on border trustees' reports and we, I guess we move on to other business and you, it sounds like you've got something.
Yeah, we, you know, we had originally given directions to town staff. To, to draft some language for us to review regarding an annexation ordinance based on the timeline. That we talked about in an earlier meeting, of course, all of that got pushed back due to ongoing emergency issues. So what I want to ask basically is. When are we, when do we want to put the annexation conversation back on the agenda? We do, we are time limited here, you know, December thirty first is when the IGA is going to expire. We should have annexation in place before that happens.
Expires December thirty first?
Indeed.
Okay, how far do our headlights go out Miranda, in terms of agenda planning?
You can go as far as you want, but you could dedicate the work session on the second Tuesday in September to this.
I think we're, I think we're going to have some parking things to work on then.
So you're bringing parking on September sixth? I would recommend you use a work session for annexation.
Annexation?
So it'd be September thirteenth.
And then for, for that work session, what do we need to do to be prepared? You've done a lot of the background work.
Yeah.
In terms of looking at other towns, but what is, where do, what's the end result we're shooting for and what do we want to accomplish?
Yeah, so I had put together a, a full kind of timeline style layout of what annexation would look like. At that meeting, there were no objections by any trustees. On any of the points that were there, so really.
I had concerns about density versus acreage and what triggers a vote.
Right, so the big question was. The big question was what triggers? An election, right? And that's really what I think we need to talk about, what, what level of annexation, what type of annexation would trigger? Those, the, the conditions that would result in an election, but in terms of the structure of it. I think of the process, we were in agreement.
Yeah, and town staff are going to, to draft out that in an ordinance language and then there will be things to fine tune. So we would bring to you at that work session a draft ordinance for consideration.
Can we go that fast?
Yeah.
Good.
I mean Eric did most of the work.
It's mostly there.
Yeah.
I think it, yeah, there's a lot of homework heavy lifting to spend down already.
Yes.
Okay, let's keep it moving along then.
Yeah.
I think it would be good to, to try to get it ahead of Boulder County in October, and I realize that this is aggressive, but their team takes a long time. And so the sooner we get it to them for review, the better.
Yeah, I think that, I think that makes sense and, and again, the homework for us was that question. Right, of like coming up with what exactly we want to see in terms of when, when is an election triggered? What, what size of property, what type of development that's being proposed, all those things.
I did send you email on July third with some comments.
Okay.
Do you want, did you send that directly to trustee Coombs Ismail? Will you send it to myself and Attorney Madsen?
Cause that way they can integrate those things.
So should I also do the same with my suggestions to make it? So when are we planning this, this work session?
Uh, September thirteenth.
The thirteenth, so the sixth is a regularly scheduled meeting?
Correct, the sixth is a regularly scheduled meeting.
And today's the sixteenth, we don't have anything in the next two weeks?
So we do, we have a meeting on August thirtieth, which will be swearing in of officers and parking supplemental budget ballot language. And then September sixth supplemental budget ballot language.
September sixth is a regular meeting.
Right.
Yeah, September sixth is a regular meeting, August thirtieth is a special meeting, so you can become closer to a full board sooner than later.
What do you mean?
We'll be adding another trustee.
Right.
Oh, so it's just to swear them in?
It's to swear them in, but we also added supplemental budget ballot language and parking since it's a special meeting.
Good.
Okay.
Okay, any other business?
You have three minutes, so I want to make it quick for you to extend.
I move to adjourn.
Second. Take the vote please.
Trustee Blakemore? Yes. Trustee Corvallon?
Yes.
Mayor Protsam Mohon?
Yes.
And trustee Coombs Ismail?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we adjourn at nine fifty seven. Thanks all.